It is, can I have your attention, please? It is six o'clock, but we only have four board members. We're gonna, we do have a quorum, but we're gonna wait a little bit and see if, give it about five minutes and see if we get some more board members. We're gonna go ahead and get started. We're actually gonna move the last item up first, which should be a quick item. And that way, that'll give an opportunity for the other board members to come. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask everybody to please silence all phones and all beepers. Good evening. This board is comprised of seven members. Four members of the board shall constitute a quorum, and the affirmative vote of four members shall be necessary for the adoption of any motion. If only four members of the board are present, an applicant may request and be entitled to a continuance to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board. If a matter is continued due to a lack of quorum, the chairperson or secretary of the board may set a special meeting to consider such matter. In the event that four votes are not obtained, an applicant may request a continuance or allow the application to proceed to the city commission without a recommendation. Pursuant to resolution number 2021-118, the City of Coral Gables has returned to traditional in-person meetings. Accordingly, any individual wishing to provide sworn testimony will be present physically in the city commission chambers. However, the planning and zoning board has established the ability for the public to provide comments, non-sworn and without evidentiary value, virtually. Accordingly, only individuals who wish to provide public comment in this format may appear and provide these comments via Zoom. Lobbyist registration and disclosure. Any person who acts as a lobbyist pursuant to the City of Coral Gables ordinance number 2006-11 must register with the city clerk prior to engaging in lobbying activities or presentations before city staff, boards, committees, and/or city commission. A copy of the ordinance is available in the office of the city clerk. Failure to register and provide proof of registration shall prohibit your ability to present to the board. As chair, I now officially call the City of Coral Gables Planning and Zoning Board Meeting of June 8, 2022, to order. The time is 6:04. Jill, if you please call the roll.
Robert Behar.
Preston.
Alex Buselo.
Nadia Miro.
Present.
Luis Revuelta.
Present.
Vinnie Torre.
Here.
Chip Withers.
Here.
Abby Eisenstadt.
Here. Notice regarding ex parte communications. Please be advised that this board is a quasi judicial board, which requires board members to disclose all ex parte communications and site visits. An ex parte communication is defined as any contact, communication, conversation, correspondence, memorandum, or other written or verbal communication that takes place outside a public hearing between a member of the public and a member of the quasi judicial board regarding matters to be heard by the board. If anyone made any contact with a board member regarding an issue before the board, the board member must state on the record the existence of the ex parte communication and the party who originated the communication. Also, if a board member conducted a site visit specifically related to the case before the board, the board member must also disclose such visit. In other case, the board member must state on the record whether the ex parte communication and/or site visit will affect the board member's ability to impartially consider the evidence to be presented regarding the matter. The board member must also state that his or her decision will be based on substantial competent evidence and testimony presented on the record today. Does any board member have such a communication or/or site visit to disclose at this time?
No.
Swearing in, I'm gonna go ahead and ask everybody, first, anybody that wants to speak on an item, I will need after I'm done to please go up to Jill and make sure you sign in, and she has your name, and she will be calling you. For swearing in, everyone who speaks this evening, we ask that you please print your name clearly on the official records and address of your residence. Now, with the exception of attorneys, all persons physically in the city commission chambers who will speak on agenda items before us this evening, please rise to be sworn in. That includes staff.
Do you swear the testimony about the issue?
If you do.
Thank you. Zoom platform participants, I will ask any person wishing to speak on tonight's agenda item to please open your chat and send a direct message to Jill Menendez stating you would like to speak before the board and include your full name. Jill will call your name when it's your turn. I ask you to be concise for the interest of time. Phone platform participants, after Zoom platform participants are done, I will ask phone participants to comment on tonight's agenda item. I also ask you to be concise for the interest of time. Next, we, as far as the approval of minutes, we do not have any minutes to approve tonight. The May 11 meeting minutes will be on the next meeting, which is June 21. The procedure that we will use tonight, first, we'll have the identification of agenda item by Mr. Caller, presentation by staff, presentation by applicant or agent, then we'll have an open public comment, first in chamber, then Zoom platform, then phone line platform. We'll go ahead afterwards, close for public comment, and we'll have board discussion, a motion, discussion, and second motion, if appropriate, and then board's final comments and a vote. Before we begin tonight, I would, on behalf of the planning and zoning board, I would like to thank Mr. Ramon Trias, the former Development Service Assistant Director, for planning, for all his work and service to the City of Coral Gables. Thank you. I think we're gonna have to go back, and we have six, one, two, three, four, we have six individuals, so we're gonna resume our order that we have on the agenda.
So starting with E1, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Is this working or not really? Are you hearing it or not hearing it? You are, okay. Item E1, in ordinance of the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida approving the vacation of public alleyway pursuant to zoning code article 14. Pursuant to zoning code article 14 process, here we go, section 14-211, abandonment and vacations in city code chapter 62, article 8, vacation, abandonment, closure of streets, easements, and alleys by private owners in the city. Application process, providing for the vacation a 20-foot wide alley, which is approximately 155 feet in length, lying between lots 12 through 18 and lots 11 and 19 and block 29, craft section, 3,000 Poncelon Boulevard, 216 and 224 Catalonia, 203 University Drive, and 225 Malaga, Coral Gables, Florida, providing for repealer provision servability clause and providing for an effective date. Mr. Commissioner, I'm gonna read all the items in, and we'll have a public hearing and vote separately on each of the different items.
Correct.
Next item is E2, in ordinance of the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida amending the future land use map of the City of Coral Gables Comprehensive Plan pursuant to zoning code article 14 process section 14-213 Comprehensive Plan and Text and Map Amendments and Small Scale Amendment Procedures, section 163.3187 Florida statutes, from commercial low-rise intensity to commercial high-rise intensity for lots 8 through 21 less the west one-half of lot 8, block 29, craft section, together with that portion of 20-foot platted alley lying east of lots 11 and 19 of block 29, again, 3,000 Poncelon Boulevard, 216 and 224 Catalonia, 203 University Drive, and 225 Malaga, Coral Gables, Florida, providing for repealer provision servability clause and providing for an effective date. Item E3, a resolution of the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida approving receipt of transfer development rights TDRs pursuant to zoning code article 14 process section 14-204.6 Review and Approval Use of TDRs on Receiver Sites for the Receipt and Use of TDRs for a Mixed-Use Project Referred to as Ponce Park Residence on Property Legally Described as Lots 8 through 21 Less the West One-Half of Lot 8, Block 29, Craft Section Together with that Portion of the 20-Foot Platted Alley Line East of Lots 11 and 19 of Said Block 29. I'm going to not read the parenthetical for the streets, it's been read previously, Coral Gables, Florida, including required conditions, providing for repealer provision servability clause and providing for an effective date. Item E4, a resolution of the City Commission of Coral Gables, Florida approving mixed-use site plan and conditional use review pursuant to zoning code article 14 process 14-203 Conditional Uses for Proposed Mixed-Use Project Referred to as Ponce Park Residence on the property legally described as lots 8 through 21 less the one-half of lot 8, block 29, craft section, together with that portion of the 20-foot platted alley lying east of lots 11 and 19 of said block 29, Coral Gables, Florida, including required conditions, providing repealer provision servability clause and providing for an effective date. Item E5, a resolution of the City of Commission of Coral Gables, Florida providing tentative platent titled Ponce Park Residences pursuant to zoning code article 14 process section 14-210 Plating Subdivision Being a Replat of 42,543 Square Feet into a Single Tract of Land on Property Legally Described as Lots 8 through 21 Less the West One-Half of Lot 8, Block 29, Craft Section Together with that Portion of 20-Foot Platted Alley lying east of lots 11 and 19 of Said Block 29 Together with a 1,318 Square Feet Portion of University Drive that runs north of Malaga Avenue right-of-way and west of the Poncelon Boulevard right-of-way in dedication of 1,725 Square Feet, 3,000 Poncelon Boulevard, 216 and 224 Catalonia, 203 University Drive, and 225 Malaga, Coral Gables, Florida, including required conditions, providing for repealer provision servability clause and providing for an effective date. Items E1, E2, E3, E4, and E5, public hearing.
Thank you. Ms. Cabrera.
Good evening, Sotomay Cabrera, Development Services Director. Thank you, Craig. Jump right into the presentation. As Craig read out to you, there are five requests being made this evening that you will be voting on. There's the vacation of the alley, the change of land use, receipt of TDRs, the mixed-use site plan, and the tentative plat. This project is located, it's actually near the Dade County Courthouse on Ponce, across from the Christie's and the Agave project that's going on just north of that in the Pond Circle Park. You've actually seen this project in a larger scale previously, it's the same location. These are the existing conditions, it's primarily lots that are not occupied at this time, and my understanding is that the lot that does have a building on it is vacant. So request number one is the vacation of the alley, number two is the land use change, number three is the receipt of the TDRs, number four is the mixed-use site plan, and number five is the tentative plat. I'm just gonna skip over that because it's not really relevant, I think, right now. So the review timeline, this went to the Development Review Committee in July of 2020. It was for a bigger project, it was at DRC. Then it went to the Board of Architects in November of 2020, was approved by the Board of Architects, a larger version of this project. The neighborhood meetings occurred on November 24, 2020. We had the staff meeting in January of '21, that's an internal meeting. Planning and zoning board saw it in February of '21. It was rejected, or continued, actually, it was continued at that time, and you saw it again in August of 2021. At that time, this board rejected it. There was, it was actually a little bit bigger, had more density, had more height. That project was rejected, the one that's here today has actually reduced some of those items. I went to Historic Preservation Board in October of '21. The Historic Preservation Board accepted the TDRs. They did not vote favorably for the vacation of the alley or the street vacation. And we're here tonight, Planning and Zoning Board, June 8. The letters to property owners went out to 1,500-foot requirement. There was public notification, five times letters were sent to the property owners. We had six property postings, five website postings, and four newspaper advertisements. The first request, the vacation of the alley, it's about 3,000 square feet. They own the properties on both sides, so vacation of the alley is something that staff feels is appropriate for their project. The second one is a change of land use to high-rise, it's currently low-rise, so they wanna go from low-rise to high-rise. The receipt of the TDRs, which would allow them to get some additional FAR on the project. They're requesting 37,581 square feet, which they have purchased, it was part of the, I think it was avocado land dispute or something. That will go, that already went to Historic Preservation Board, Historic Preservation Board already approved the sending site. You will be reviewing today the receiving site, and then it will go to city commission. The mixed-use site plan, here's the site plan, you can see there that there is a paseo, very similar to the location where the alley used to be. There's a vehicular entrance on the north side, there's ground floor retail, as required for the mixed use, the arcade, a plaza, which is part of what's being offered to the city in exchange for some of these, for the approval of this project. This is for the tentative plat, and what's interesting here is, they're actually going to be, I don't know if you can see that, but they're gonna be dedicating some right-of-way, and then we're going to be returning some right-of-way because the curve there is actually not the way, the best way to develop that, it's actually not a good way, the way it is today, the existing. So we're gonna be trying to correct that, and this is actually a point that I believe Planning and Zoning, I mean, the Public Works would have liked to see that this slip lane be removed in its entirety. Historic wouldn't like to see this slip lane removed. The planning department doesn't wanna see the slip lane removed, but at the minimum, we will be correcting that curvature there. So staff's recommendation is that this application is consistent with the comp plan, goals, objectives, and policies. We recommend approval. The application complies with the findings of fact, and the standard for approvals are satisfied subject to conditions of approval. And the conditions are that the applicant issued to the city a million dollars of in-kind improvements to the university right-of-way and the abutting park. They will also maintain this park in perpetuity, and we're requesting that it actually be prior to the TCO or within one year after approval, whichever occurs first. That they underground all the overhead utilities, that the off-site public realm improvements as identified in the plans offered by the applicants are obviously included, and the annual traffic monitor team be conducted for three years. And that's really the extent of the presentation from staff.
I have a question.
Sure.
From Pass Street, does the order that you guys have put these in the agenda matter? Because aren't some of these things more conditional on the approval before? For example, vacation of the alley, which we've seen before, if you approve it first and something happens later, you vacated an alley that is not consistent with the project. Is there some reason?
When it goes to commission, it will be entered in the appropriate.
But from the review perspective.
That one that's dependent on the other.
Is the review of the first item being the vacation make sense compared to doing it some other way? I'm just asking whether your professional opinion, does it make sense to do maybe the master plan review first? I'm not sure the answer is, I'm just asking.
I'm not sure that it makes a difference at this stage, whether you do first the site plan review, or the vacation of the alley, or the, you know, TDRs.
In the past, we've seen where the vacation of the alley is tied to a project that was presented later, and we actually voted on the alley before the project was actually approved. So I'm just saying, is that something that, does it make sense to just sort of switch things around?
It does make sense, because if the project doesn't go forward, then you vacated the alley. And what Vinnie is saying is correct, in the past, you vacated an alley later.
Right, I understand.
It's just from experience, I think we had that issue once.
The vacation of the alley won't be taking place here today, so that's why I'm saying that for purposes of your voting, I don't think it makes a difference what order you take it in, in this planning and zoning board meeting.
Mr. Caller, any comment on that?
I don't, I think the board can choose to take the order that it wants to. Obviously, if you're addressing the merits of the project and you don't find it, and your recommendation is for denial of the project, then since the alleyway, the purpose of the alleyway is needed for the project, then you can certainly consider the alleyway last, it's just on the agenda this way.
Understood.
One moment, if, taking the opposite viewpoint, if for whatever reason we deny the closing of the alley, I'm not saying that that's gonna happen, then pretty much that kills the project, right?
Yes. You can ask the applicant that question, but yes, probably.
The same thing happens with the TDR, is there sort of a necessity for the project that needs to be sort of?
And I'm not debating the point with you, because I, actually, you bring up a very good point, and it just came to my mind, we deny the alley, we save a tremendous amount of time. I'm not saying I'm proposing that, but just saying there's a possibility, right?
We can address that at the end when we make, if there's a motion and so forth, and we can take it up at that order, or how we want to do it.
For the sake of time, I'm just suggesting we take the big meaty part first and then leave the alley and the TDRs for last, but that's just my perspective.
We're gonna hear the whole presentation, as a whole.
You'll have to make a motion?
Yeah. Thank you. Mr. DiUri?
That's what I'm saying.
Welcome, Mr. DiUri. Before you begin, I just wanted to recap. Originally, in February 10, 2021, you did your initial presentation. That initial presentation was about two and a half hours before this board. On August 11, 2021, you revised your presentation. On May 5, 2022, there was a deferment, and today, we're going ahead and, a smaller scale of the project that's being presented before us. What I would like to ask you is, I would like to ask you to please limit your presentation to 30 minutes, because we do have a full house, and I'd like to give an equal opportunity to everybody here that wishes to speak, to please do that, and we're supposed to sunset at nine o'clock.
Absolutely, that's not an issue. In fact, I'm gonna let Mr. Morris speak.
Thank you.
I believe a challenge was brought to him to create a better project, higher-quality project, to find something transitional. I'm using the exact words that we used for our direction, transitional, challenge to create a better project, and he really took it to heart, and so I'm gonna let.
Could I ask you, just before, sorry, if you'd just give your name and address for the record for the reporter, thank you.
Sure. Anthony DiUri, 1450 Brickell Avenue. I'm gonna let Mr. Morris speak to that, I just need the presentation. Thank you. And at the completion of Mr. Morris's comments, I'll save time for rebuttal if needed in particular comments or cross. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Alan Morris, reside at 3,700 Granada Boulevard, and I thank you for letting me address your board this evening. As you may know, the mission of our company, which is also my personal mission, is to inspire, impress, and improve. Very simple, three words. We wanna inspire people with the beauty of our projects, we wanna impress them with the excellence of their experience, and we want to improve the lives of all we touch. And that means the residents in the buildings that we build, or the tenants in the office buildings that we build, or the city in which we build, and the neighborhoods that are affected by what we build. I know that's a high aspiration, but that's our intent, and to be able to do that in our own hometown of Coral Gables is a great privilege and a great opportunity that I'm grateful for. Tonight, in the.
Mr. Morris, did you state your address for the record? I don't, you did.
Yes, I did.
Thank you, sorry about that.
No, that's fine. We have taken your comments from the last meeting to heart, and also have sought out feedback, comments, suggestions, recommendations from the surrounding neighbors and other neighbors here in Coral Gables that are all very important to us, and we treat them with great respect. And in response to that, we've made six major concerns in a major redesign of the project. First, we're eliminating the floor area ratio from the roadway that we had originally been told was appropriate. So that's completely removed. Secondly, we've reduced the density to one-half the number of units that we had originally proposed. Thirdly, we've reduced the square footage by 20% of the project. Fourthly, we've treated this as a transitional location, and in that context, have reduced the height of the building by five floors below what we had originally thought was appropriate, which actually makes it one-half of the size of the Plaza Tower next door. Fifth, there was originally going to be rental apartment building, was our intention and our desire, but in response to the request of the neighbors, we have transitioned it to a luxury condominium, because they felt like that would bring less traffic into the neighborhood and would attract a higher level of occupant resident in the building that they wanted to have in the neighborhood, and we've agreed to do that. And lastly, we have agreed to reduce the parking dramatically by 92 parking spaces as a way of reducing traffic created from the building and traffic for the neighborhood. We will still be creating a park for the City of Coral Gables in front of the building at our expense entirely, for both the creation of the park and for the maintenance of the park into the future, so it will not be a burden to the city, but will be something, together with the green open space that we're creating, available to the public. Lastly, as you may know, the architecture. Lastly, as you may know, the Architectural Review Board has unanimously approved our new plan. And as you've just heard, the Planning Department of the city has fully recommended our new plan. And I just hope that we'll have the opportunity to do something that would be as much of a blessing to the community and inspiring to the community as Alhambra Towers has been. Just a different style, a new style of Mediterranean architecture that will celebrate City Hall and the design of City Hall reinterpreted for the 21st century, in the same way that Alhambra Towers was a reinterpretation of the Biltmore Hotel for the 21st century. So I would just respectfully request your approval, and we stand ready to answer any of your questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Jill, we have some emails that came in. There's a total of five emails that are going to be entered into the record. Is that correct?
Correct.
Have you received any other emails on this item?
No additional emails, no.
Okay. How many speakers do you have for this item?
We have 20 speakers in the room. We have quite a few people signed in via Zoom, and only one has indicated that they wish to speak.
Okay. What I'm going to go ahead and do is, I'm going to ask everybody to limit their speaking for three minutes when they come up to the podium, please. And that way, it'll give everybody an ability to comment and so forth. Also, if somebody has already gone ahead and given a point of view, you may want to just agree with them, or refresh something new. Also, I want to make sure, has everybody signed up with Jill in the podium? Anybody that has not, if you would please go up to Jill, and she will go ahead and get your name, address, and so forth to be called. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jill, you want to go ahead and, are you able to call the first speaker?
Yes. Maria Cruz, please.
Maria Cruz, 1447 Miller Road. I'm going to try to talk very fast, because there's a lot of things to say. First of all.
Thank you.
The question was asked, was there a reason for the alley vacation first? Yes, there is a reason. Because if the alley is now vacated, they cannot join the two properties, and they do not have the land that they need to be able to build. Yes, the alley has to be first. Okay? Is there an acre if the alley is now vacated? The comprehensive plan, if you follow the agenda, you will see that is in order. And everything is predicated on the fact that everything will be approved. If not, the building cannot be made. Okay? The comprehensive plan needs to be approved. As a matter of fact, the staff says it complies. It doesn't comply unless the amendment goes through. The TDRs, this is not a receiving site. It has to be approved. Everything is contingent in the approval of what they're asking. In other words, if you don't give them what they're asking, this doesn't go through. Okay? The university, they're not asking for University Drive anymore. No, they're only asking for a part of University Drive, so they can square off the property, the parcel. So 407 square feet will be taken from University Drive, so they can square the parcel, because otherwise the building as designed will not fit there. The Historic Preservation Board denied. They denied their request. Okay? When Ramon Trias was here, most of you were here, on 10th. Ramon Trias had a wonderful presentation, and the result was denied. Now we have a new staff. And now, everything is hunky-dory, and we're ready to move on. When we talk about housing, the glorious thing of the housing is that people will be able to go to employment by public transportation. I would like to know how many people are going to be able to afford living there, that are going to be, you know, owners, executives, or whatever, are going to use public transportation to go work around there. Okay? I have a serious issue with the fact that this report from the staff was not published until June 3rd. There were two days off for the weekend, so in fact, we have had four days to digest this document. We're not architects. Please let me finish. Okay? We're not architects. Okay? All right. If you look at the pages that they're giving you, okay, you will see that everything I've told you is here. I didn't make it up. It's in this report. They have .99 acres. That's not one, it's .99. And that is with the public alley. That's very important. They don't have that size. With, it says very clearly, including the public alley. That's why the alley is first. If they don't get the public alley, they cannot do it. Okay? All right? I told you about this, the MF, you know, let me tell you. I'm insulted when we compare this building to the Plaza. That's adding insult to injury. These people, the neighborhood, I don't live there, I drive there every morning. The people that live there have been paying for the fact that the city allowed the Plaza to be built. That's, I mean, that's the worst thing that could have ever happened. And now we're going to say, since the Plaza was built, this is a little smaller than the Plaza. The Plaza should have never been built. Okay?
Please hold your applause, please.
The issue with the Mediterranean bonus, you know what? I sat through the Mediterranean bonus meetings. If this building is Mediterranean bonus, let me tell you, my house is an African design. Okay? All right? I hope that when you drive there, when you drive there, you see what these people that live right there are going to see. You have the Plaza on one side, then you have this building on the other side. It's brickwork. They're going to be driving on the shadows, because there will be no sun there.
If you could wrap it up, please.
I can only wrap it up very fast. They talk about the traffic study. I hope you all remember what was happening in Coral Gables, Florida, and the rest of the world, in November 2020. How many of us were driving then? Not many. That's when they did the traffic study. Okay? All right? I told you, let's see, the employment. I am here to tell you that this project is a travesty, that this is an insult. And let me tell you what the word on the street is, and then I'm going to close. The word on the street is, and some of you know me, people call me, I hear, I listen, I'm a good listener, I'm a retired teacher. The word on the street is, Mr. Morris is not getting the right of first refusal on parking seven. So this is a peace offering.
Ma'am, we're here just to talk about this project.
That's okay. Okay. I'm going to tell you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Again, this is a travesty. Do not insult the neighbors.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, just a point of procedure. In a quasi-judicial setting, there's an opportunity for questioning of the particular witnesses. And so, would you like me to do it per witness, or retain until the end?
No, no, we're not going to do that right now.
You're going to retain until the end?
Yes.
Counsel has a right of cross-examination. However, we can, typically, the way you can do it is part of his rebuttal. He can call people up that he wishes to ask questions of. These people have, should remain in the room, because they're subject to cross-examination. And on the applicant's rebuttal, he can do as part of his rebuttal, the cross-examination of those witnesses.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, as a point of procedure, I didn't want to overstep, and I wanted to follow your direction. So thank you very much.
Good evening, gentlemen and lady. I'm Jack Lowell. I live at 185 West Sunrise Avenue. Been a resident of Coral Gables for 38 years. I'm a real estate broker. I just want to make a quick comment on the vacation of alley issue. You need to get legal advice, but if you own both sides of an alley or a public right-of-way, you can ask for that to be vacated as a matter of law. So it has nothing to do with the project, it's just you go ahead and get it done. Now, we have here a situation where you have a local developer with a great reputation and wonderful community spirit, who does what he says he was going to do. 121 Alhambra is, my opinion, the prettiest building in Coral Gables. And the attention to detail, everything that's been done there has been great. So you know he's going to abide by whatever it's doing. He also lives in the Gables, so he's going to be committed to doing something that is of benefit to the city, and I think he's a terrific person to be doing this project. Now, if you look at the comparison in the report between the project that was submitted to you in 2021 versus the one that's for you now, you see all the changes that have been made for the better. We're down to 80 units, and a condo section, and all the other criteria have been reduced. So I think this is a much improved project, and I think it's a credit to the community, and I support it wholeheartedly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Aurelio Durana? I think he will have a follow.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning and Zoning Board. Aurelio Durana, 322 Alessio Avenue. Essentially, incorporate by reference all of the remarks made by Maria Cruz. I do want to object to the limitation of the witnesses' time to only three minutes. I would point out to you, which is obvious from the record, we live now in the shadow of the mall at Tilt Iwakan, on Ponce Circle Park. That's already bad enough. What Mr. Morris wants to do to the neighborhood, I mean, a man of his reputation, his integrity, the buildings he's built before, he shouldn't even be considering. He shouldn't be bringing up as a point of comparison what I, the ridiculous proposal that we originally made at 17, 18 stories, and now I'm bringing it down to 14. The point of comparison here is the existing zoning, which allows 77 feet. Regarding the vacation of the alley, Mr. Lowell may be correct, the abutting owner may request the vacation of the alley, obviously. The city may do as soon as possible. Now, the issue is, they should be paying for it. And how much is 3,000 square feet of commercial real estate worth in Coral Gables today? A million dollars, at least? The FAR for the property now is denser than it was even in the original proposal. So we have more building in the same or lesser space, because Mr. Morris is taking less of University Avenue. The parking reduction, I mean, I don't see how that works to our advantage. I don't see the owners of luxury condominiums taking freebie or crossing the street and taking the trolley, and mixing up with the hoi polloi at the mall across the street. It is going to push the traffic down into the south, into the craft section neighborhood, especially with the rezoning of the upper craft section north of University. Bear in mind, the historic San Sebastian apartments are just southwest of this massive Regarding the TDRs, I was totally, I wondered when the commission approved, basically, the expansion of the TDR reception district to allow for receipt of the TDRs by Mr. Morris's project. I had no idea, there was no heading there. This is to benefit the Allen Morris project, whatever. Got totally unawares. I'm sure you can get advice when you cancel. So in summary, please reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anthony Quetta, Bernardo will follow.
Good evening. My name is Anthony Quetta Bernardo. I live at 718 Valencia Avenue. And I just have a request that when you look at the proposal in this project, that you are consistent on which are the applicable zoning regulations. I remember reading that the reason that they asked for a taller building is because their design was submitted prior to the 2021 zoning change that forbid that kind of height. But then I see that the 2017 did not permit TDRs. And if I understand things correctly, the allowance of TDRs outside of the business development, business improvement district was a sudden May board commission meeting item, that nobody understood what occurred. So I do believe that there is a legal question here that you need to take very seriously. You cannot give them the benefits of both sides of the zoning. If you're going to go by one zoning regulation, you need to stick to it, and just make sure that we don't end up with another lawsuit like we had with Wawa. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anthony Quetta, Bernardo. Oscar Sosa.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Could you state your name and address, please?
Oscar Sosa, 116 San Sebastian Avenue. We are one block away from the, from this huge building that they want to do now in front of us. First, I'd like to say that I do feel offended that Mr. Morris says that they listen to the residents. They never listen to the residents. When they presented the first project, we tried to meet with them, and they never met with us. All these changes come now, after you, the board, rejected the project. So for him to say that he respects the wishes of the residents is insulting to all of us in the area. We, he started with a 179-foot project, came down, what, 30 feet? I believe that the as of right, or the zoning says, is 77 feet the height, so he's asking you to go twice as big. We got burned by the Plaza. The Plaza said, we're going to do condos. No. Yes, they said, we're going to do condos. That's how they started. Then all of a sudden, they changed it, we're going to do rentals, because the market is not good for condos. And we got stuck with 265 rental units around our area. How do we know that Mr. Morris is not going to change once, if this project is approved, and come back and say, oh, I'm not doing condos anymore, I'm going to do rentals? We do not trust developers, and we're not against developers. But we want them to stick to the code. The code says 77 feet, build 77 feet. We don't think that we should give any, or the city should give any free land to the developers. They're asking for 460, 470 feet of University Drive, as Maria mentioned before. Why? I don't understand why you would do that. If they don't get those 450, 460 feet, they don't have a project, not the way it's presented. So please, I ask you to deny this project. It will harm the tranquility of the people that live around the area. As Maria says, we live there. Every day, our kids, we have to be worried about our kids, because there's a lot of cars going in through our street. On Ponce de Leon, there's a lot more traffic, and they haven't opened the hotel, they haven't opened the retail stores. So imagine the Plaza, which was a mistake, I think, by the city allowing such a monstrosity. Now they want to put another building, which is not going to be as huge, but it's going to be huge, right in front. I ask you to please consider the residents of the area. We have not been heard. We talked to the group after you guys denied. We explained what we wanted, or what we will feel comfortable with. We were not heard. So the project that you have right now is totally against what we feel should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Attilio DiMatteo? And David Fornier will follow.
My name is Attilio DiMatteo, 29 San Sebastian Avenue.
My name is Atilio de Matia, 29 San Sebastian Avenue. I will, you know, be very short and pointed. I'm completely aligned with Sosa and the San Sebastian community. I don't have any technical expertise. I know that there are rules, and of course, we're going to follow the rules. But the main point I want to bring is, and asking the board to look at the project from a overall compliance standpoint and the impact that could have in that area, mainly the traffic, and just take that in consideration and therefore reject the project as it stands. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is David Fournier, 128 San Sebastian. So, as you can see, the house is full. It's full of people who's against this project. We have to deal with this project of Plaza. So, everybody's going to tell you, "The Plaza, the Plaza, the Plaza." So, we cannot compare anything with the Plaza. Now, what I wanted to say was said before, there's one thing that I wanted to discuss is regarding the traffic. The traffic is horrendous. When you are on the Ponce northbound in the morning at the light with Malaga, the line goes all the way through Romano. In the, around 5:00, 6:00 PM, when you take University, from Le Jun, from Le Jun, the line goes all the way past Salzedo. This is Salzedo, right? Salzedo goes all the way to Vicky Bakery. And then, you have even the light on Salzedo for the people at the light to make a right. This is without having the Plaza done 100%. So, we are already under a huge amount of traffic in the downtown of Coral Gables. If you adding these 12 stories, it's going to be crazy. First, it started with 16 floors. Then, it goes to down and say, "Listen, guys, we went five floors down." But you start it to the moon. You start it at the light that is too high. So, don't come to us to tell us, "We listen to you. We go down to 12." Now, we understand, we know the music. So, what we're asking is very simple, is allowed 77 feet, build something with 77 feet. I'm sure Mr. Morris will do something beautiful with 77 feet. And then, do not give away the alley public. In the alley, there is public, is to the public. So, we need to have, cannot take, please don't take away the alley. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
David Winker.
Good evening. David Winker, 4720 South Le Jun. We hear residents over and over again asking that the city follow its own rules. Mr. Morris gave a presentation lobbying this board. Mr. Morris is not registered to lobby. This has been a recurring problem. And so, I want to put on the record, as a principle, he's required under your code, Section 2-305 and Miami-Dade Code 2-111G. So, even in the process we're in, the developer's not following the code. I would like to read two resident letters into the record. One is from Jennifer Davis, who lives at 133 San Sebastian Avenue. "On November 12, 2021, Ponce neighbors wrote a letter addressed to our city commissioners as concerned neighbors who, after two meetings with the developer, Alan Morris, on October 5th and October 18, 2021, remained disturbed and disappointed by their current proposal. Our host, Mr. Spencer Morris, was very gracious to invite us, and it appeared that the meeting was intended to hear neighbor input. However, the plans and meetings did not reflect any of our concerns and suggestions, and this concern caused us to write the letter. During the meetings, the developer focused on defending the merits of the project. Every neighbor spoke out against the heightened scale. We strongly oppose the proposed height, when what is allowed as of right in our building code is 77 feet with a Mediterranean bonus. We oppose the architecture and ask for a new design of smaller scale. We suggested that the developer revisit the architectural plans to offer a more boutique style of architecture and building scale. Not a single neighbor likes the crescent-shaped design. Many neighbors felt the building was undeserving of such a prominent area of real estate. The general sentiment was that the project belonged in Dade Land or Brickell, not Coral Gables. These meetings with Mr. Spencer Morris felt like a waste of time whose only what purpose was to meet political criteria so the developer could check the box. Another point I would like to address is that the overwhelming height of Ponce Park Residence in conjunction with the height and scale of Ponce Plaza would create a concrete wall that would swallow Ponce de Leon Boulevard, creating a tunnel hidden alongside two giant concrete structures. This most definitely is not the city beautiful. The sheer width of Ponce Park Residence, which requires vacating of the alleyway, does not belong in this location, directly adjacent to single-family homes a few hundred feet away, not to mention the traffic, which includes all the new development, including Ponce Plaza, Alexa Craft, and Ponce Park Residences. Is it okay if I just finish the letter? "In addition, I am concerned with backup traffic at the Malaga intersection of Ponce de Leon, which makes it very difficult for neighbors to enter and exit our streets. What they're proposing for Ponce Park Residence simply does not make any aesthetic or community sense." Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Patrick O'Connell. And then Lauren Dolan will follow.
Hi. Good evening. Patrick O'Connell, real estate executive, Berkshire Hathaway Home Services, EWM Realty, 201 Alhambra Circle. So, I'm here to speak in favor of the development. I think in the last couple of years, we've seen our downtown undergo a renaissance. It's attracted many, many new fine restaurants, retailers, office tenants. This has also made us more of a destination for a lot of high net worth individuals that have been relocating into downtown who desire to be close to and have the walkability of those retailers, restaurants, and businesses. They're places of business. So, I feel that this type of high-quality, lower-density, luxury residence is what we have many buyers for today. And I just think that it's a perfect addition to support our downtown core and keep it growing, as I think we all need to do, to continue to contribute as it does to our city's tax base. So, speaking in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lauren Dolan. And then Jeff Sullivan.
Hi. My name is Lauren Dolan. I reside at 1460 Cecilia Avenue in Coral Gables. I'm here to speak in favor of Ponce Park Residences. Our city has a need for well-built and quality condominiums for both residents who are downsizing as well as new residents. The surge of new residents to our community is not going away anytime soon, as our location as the gateway to the Americas is our blessing. Currently, the proposed parcels are in a state of blight and vacancy and are not utilized to the highest and best use for the community and the city. Word on the street is that Alan Morris is dedicated to our entire community and is a quietly generous philanthropist, especially for our local schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Sullivan.
Jeff Sullivan, 936 Bird Road, Coral Gables. And I'm speaking in favor of the project just based on the, I think, the civility of the process and how that when the community gathers together and gives input and then alterations are made, I think that's how we arrive at good development. We understand there's always a tension as residents. We wish there were no cars on the road or people in the way of what we do. But also, we depend now on the vibrancy of the downtown area and the commerce and the business and the life that it brings and how it supports all of our systems, from police to fire and other things that we benefit from. And so, there's always a tension of the development and growth that goes on downtown and then how it impacts our neighborhoods. So, just recognizing that tension that exists, I think this project comes at a happy medium in order to promote good growth and good development without as great a negative impact on the neighborhood.
Yanira Serralta. Eduardo Gonzalez.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Yanira Serralta, 243 Camilo Avenue, about two to three blocks south of University Drive. So, right in the middle where this whole thing is happening. I've been living in Coral Gables for about 10 years now and in my, like, present residence for four years. I feel like we're under constant siege. Why? Because people keep saying that we're in downtown. Yeah, we're close to downtown, but that's meant to be a transitional area. Right south of University Drive, there is single-family residence, a single-family home, small, single-family homes. So, how does it make sense that a transitional building goes from 14 floors or 12 floors to a single-family home, a one-floor, single-family home? That doesn't make sense to me. And I'm getting very disappointed because I feel like the city has zoning rules and regulations for a reason, and that is to protect the residents. I shouldn't have to be here. I have 18, my daughter here. I should be playing with her. I shouldn't have to be here protecting where I live. I am terrified sometimes of crossing University Drive. I am terrified of crossing Ponce de Leon. The traffic is insane, and I can't even imagine what it's going to be. Like, these tall buildings keep cropping up. Yes, we live close to downtown, but this is a transitional area. This is not downtown, downtown. Unless, like I'm imagining, maybe south of University, that's also going to be high rises. I don't know what's happening. I mean, I'm confused. I feel under siege. I feel disappointed that our city is not protecting us. These people that are speaking in favor of the project, they don't live there. We live there. We live there.
Total applause, please.
I ask you, you know, I ask you, please, take us into consideration. It makes me very sad that I have to move. I'm going to have to leave Coral Gables because I don't feel safe anymore. I don't feel happy anymore. I love my neighborhood, but I feel like we're not being protected and we're not being sheltered in the way that we should. Thank you very much.
Eduardo Gonzalez.
Thanks to the commission. Thanks to everyone here present. At some point...
Please state your name, sir, and your address.
Yes, Eduardo Gonzalez Hernandez, 243 Camilo Avenue, Coral Gables. So, thank you. Thank you, everyone. And we've been here before, and we really are trying to protect something special. That neighborhood in Coral Gables, just south of University, is special. It's, we have Le Jun on one side and Ponce de Leon on the other side. We know our neighbors remarkably well. We talk to our neighbors all the time. Every day, we talk to neighbors perhaps 10 times, 10 times a day. That's very unusual. But then, we cross the street. We have a lot of kids in the neighborhood. Just crossing the street in Salzedo is becoming dangerous. Much less, I mean, we are afraid to cross University. There's not even a sign there for crossing the street there. Yeah, there's a stop sign, but it's not protected. We can't cross University without some risk. And then, we have this huge building already. The plaza is already going up. It's almost completed, but it's a huge area. I mean, I'm going to talk about this. It's been talked about a lot, a nauseum. But it's a huge building, and next to it, crossing the street, single-family homes. What happened there? Are we repeating this again? And then, the other street, the Godina Group is building another huge building there, proposed there in the craft section, and that was a swap, which we don't understand. But please, enough. What is happening here? Where is the ideal of a city beautiful, where the residents really have a special place to live? This is not Brickell. This is not Kendall. So, it's, I don't know what to say. It's terrible. So, please help us protect what's special, responsible growth. We have to grow. I understand that. But through responsible growth and try to protect the ideals of the city, and really, no building there can be qualified as beautiful when it's so tall, so big, that it doesn't respond to certain zoning. It's really a transitional area. Anything more than three, four stories is too tall. And folks can make their money, their investment, without being greedy. So, let's just be responsible. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hector Bay. Hector. McDonald West.
Good evening. My name is McDonald West. I reside at 5325 Orduna Drive. Beginning in 1999, I worked with Alan Morris in developing Alhambra Towers. In order to develop that building, we had to get many of the same approvals for that building that we're asking for today. We needed to vacate a right-of-way. We need a part of it. We needed to change the future land use plan. We needed transferable development rights in order to build the building. And we also needed to get a mixed-use permit to be able to build that building. Many people consider that the iconic building in Coral Gables. What Alan is trying to do with this building is to build a similar iconic condominium building. I would encourage you to seriously consider voting in favor of this project. Alan worked with the city of Coral Gables in order to make Alhambra Towers happen. And he's trying to do the exact same thing with this Ponce Park Residence. And I'm quite sure that if the city works with Alan, we'll be able to get a magnificent building on that corner. The Architectural Review Board has already unanimously voted in favor of it. The City Planning Department is recommending it. And I would encourage you to also approve and recommend this project. Thank you.
Robert Kirk. And following Mr. Kirk will be Brian Baracca.
Good evening. My name is Robert Kirk. I live on 117 Santander Avenue. I have the distinction of being the person that lives the closest to this project of all the neighbors who have spoken. I would tell you that my home life and our quality life has already been adversely affected by the plaza. My backyard faces the plaza. I already have the hum of the chillers or the ventilation fans in my backyard. It's no longer quiet at night. I have lights from the plaza that make it so I no longer need security lights in my backyard. The other day, my wife and I were standing in our backyard, looking where this project would be built. And we realized at 149 feet, it's going to block the sun in my backyard when the sun starts to set. I'm asking you to stop the insanity. We have already been adversely impacted. This is insult on top of injury. We have kids that live on our street. We have five school-aged children on San Sebastian. There are many school-aged children. That's one block away. Traffic has already gotten bad, as many people have said, without the plaza being even 80% fully occupied. Please don't add more density, more traffic, to an area that is already suffering very bad from what everyone seems to agree was a big mistake in allowing the scale, size, and scope of the plaza. I'm appealing to your sympathy, your empathy, to help us out. Let's keep this a residential area. Let them build what they can build as of right on that spot, you know. But this is, stop downtown from encroaching onto our streets. When I bought my house, the plaza didn't exist. Where the plaza is now, we're residential homes. And it's getting worse and worse. And please deny this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brian Baracca. And then Ms. Thompson will follow.
Good afternoon. My name is Brian Baracca. I live at 507 Bird Road. I also own a law firm at 2701 Ponce de Leon Boulevard, the AmTrust Bank Building right over here. I live, work, and play in Coral Gables and have for the last 20 years. I try... I try, whenever possible, not to leave the Gables. I don't put many miles on my car because I bike to work. I bike to work right through the San Sebastian neighborhood, which has little to no traffic in the neighborhood. Of course, on the, on Le Jun, there's traffic, on Ponce, there's some traffic, but in the neighborhood itself, I mean, I rarely have to get out of the way of a car. I ride my bike slowly at about 12 miles an hour right past this corner every day on the way to and from work, and it's hideous. We live in the city beautiful, we, you know, when, when the Quick Stop was there, it was ugly. Now that the Quick Stop is gone, it's still ugly in a similar way. That parking lot's ugly. And this is all right next to the courthouse. I'm, I'm a lawyer, I go there frequently, and people that come to conduct business at that courthouse, you know, view this corner as a, as a greeting place, an entryway into our city, and they come into the city beautiful and they see this ugly corner. Through two real estate booms, nobody has gotten it together to beautify and improve this ugly corner. Now, we, we thankful, thankful to Mr. Morris to build another gorgeous building at this place that can generally be considered the gateway in some ways to our community. So I support the project, and I hope the, the commission will as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dorothy Thompson. Following Ms. Thompson will be Maria Sosa.
Welcome back, Ms. Thompson.
Good evening to the planning board members. In the spirit of transparency, I will, we, I will say that I, I know some of you, if not all of you-
Can I ask you to state your name and address, please?
Yes, that I have served some years with the two members at the far right over here, almost around six years with you, Vinnie Torrey, on the Historic Preservation Board. Delightful experience, sitting next to you and deciding things like this, TDRs and so forth for all those years. And then is the, the other one-
Ms. Thompson, if, if I can ask for your address, just for the court reporter, please?
I'm sorry, Dorothy Thompson, 2600 Cardena Street.
Thank you.
And Chip Withers, I served eight years with him, sitting next to him on the City Commission, right?
Those were such enjoyable years, weren't they?
I was gonna say, it was really delightful with Vinnie, and I don't know so much with you. I, you know, in the spirit of levity, I'm just saying this, of course, but honest to Pete, it was always with, what color my nail polish? What kind of eyeshadow I had on? He doesn't do those things to you, though, does he?
I was just attentive, that was, that's the bar of mine.
Well, anyway, in the spirit of transparency, I wanted to say that we did serve, but I, I did not lobby them or hadn't spoken to them at all about this project. And also them, I want to say that this morning, I attended a very nice event, it was the Founder's Day Memorial for George Merrick, the founder of a city, George Merrick. And, you know, he was a developer. The developers get a lot of bad publicity and bad names, but he was our best developer. And if it wasn't for he, for him, excuse me, if it wasn't for him, we wouldn't even be here tonight. So I want to say developers are not all what these people, you know, make them out to be. And as far as Alan Morris is concerned, he's a fine gentleman. He's also my son-in-law. He's married to my daughter, one of my daughters, and so I want to make a few remarks out of a very personal nature. I think that you all know that he's the builder of the 201 Alhambra Plaza, um, excuse me, not 201, the Alhambra Towers, they said 201 Alhambra before, the other one. Alhambra Towers, which is arguably the most beautiful building in the City of Coral Gables with the exception of the Biltmore Hotel. And speaking about that, just on the aside, when I was mayor, one of the most cantankerous meetings I ever had was with whether or not we would do anything with the Biltmore Hotel. And this whole, this whole room was filled, like it is tonight, with people opposing the Biltmore Hotel's renovation. Anyway, Ms. Maria Cruz had a few extra moments, and she set a precedent, I thought may, a couple more moments. I want to say that Alan Morris has, comes from, from a family of builders, of developers. His father developed the first shopping center, North Side Shopping Center here in Miami, as well as a Dayland Shopping Center. All quality projects, did very well, they're still there. He has been acclaimed, even from Maitland, Florida, one of his many projects around this known estate by the whole country for, for the kind of buildings he has put up in their cities. He's, he's a quality developer, he's a quality individual. And I will say not too much more about him personally, because I think anyone who knows Alan Morris knows he's a gentleman. He would never do, he's a hometown boy, born and raised here in Coral Gables, he's not, not from outside the city or outside the state, he is a homebody boy. And he's not gonna do anything, never has, never will, do anything that will harm the city or the ambiance of the city. To conclude my few remarks, I'll say it from another direction. When I was in the commission, there were, the, the TDRs came into play, and originally they were from the downtown district solely, and in, they have burgeoning out somewhat, so this is not setting a precedent with these TDRs. And Vinnie, you and I sat in the Historic Preservation Board, we had many, many cases come up on these TDRs, so you know this is not an unusual request. And as far as the CBD is concerned, that used to only go as far as Almeria to the south, and there may be exceptions to that, to 201 Sevillar Building, the 201 Sevillar Avenue Building, they extended it for that particular one more block. So there's lots of precedents, and it's done for, for good reasons, and I trust the integrity of this board, I certainly trust the integrity of Alan Morris. Personally, personally speaking, and there's no question about it, anyone who doesn't know Alan, who does know Alan, would agree with me. And that's my remarks for this evening. Thank you all for serving.
Thank you.
Maria Sosa. And Arhan will follow.
Hello, my name is Maria Sosa. I live at 116 San Sebastian Avenue. Thank you for allowing me to speak to the board. I don't think we're here debating whether Mr. Morris is a good person or not. We all believe he is. This is purely a building code issue. Although it may seem that the proposal is smaller, I don't believe it is. It's very far from that. The project is twice as big per code, since the current height is 77 feet tall, and the proposed project sits at 149 feet tall, almost double of the current code. I believe this is a new practice where developers come in with a three times the size of the allowed project, to then be denied and come back at half, which is really double, so that we feel, wow, this is a small project. Never was, you know, they started so big, by the time you reduce it, you're still at double the current code. So I don't feel grateful for that. The issue on rentals and condos, someone mentioned before, that's exactly how the plaza pitched in their project to the residents. It was all condos, and then we were down the line, realized that that was not the case, it was all rentals. The alley belongs to the residents and not to the developers, nor to the board, nor to the commissioners, nor, nor to Kendall, it belongs to us. I don't know why it is so hard to listen to the residents and hear our cry for help. We're not the downtown district, we are single-family homes with families and small children. All the people that have spoken here in favor to this project do not live in our neighborhood. They do not know what we're going through. They do not suffer the consequences that we are suffering at the moment with the building of the plaza, little yet with the occupancy and the businesses that the plaza and the traffic that that's gonna bring to us. So all those people don't know what we are going through. They don't, they live very far away from our area. So I just ask, humbly ask, for responsible development, no vacation of the alley, and no change from low-rise to high-rise. It's too much for our tiny area where we have little children trying to play outside. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
William Plaza will follow, Emilio Millares as well.
Hi, good evening. My name is Arjun Nohant. I'm a resident of 3100 Galliano Court. I'm a neighbor of Bob, so if you go into Santander, my house faces west, so basically I'll be looking straight at the project from my, from my place. I agree with what's been said by Margaret just beforehand now. People are saying that Mr. Morris is, is a great person, a good developer and all that, but nobody said something about the size of the project. I wish we could stay just by what the code allows, 77 feet. This afternoon, I talked to my neighbor next door, he used to work for the city, and we were looking at the plaza, and he's like, oh, Ari, you know, you have to just think of how much your property has gone up in value. I say, Ed, we don't care about that. We live here, this is our place where we live. I don't care if it goes up, I just, you know, want a nice place to live. We moved in there about 12 years ago, it was a very nice neighborhood, you can hear the birds in the morning, we've got foxes running around, all kinds of nice stuff in the middle of the city. But now, I mean, I come home at night, it's dark, but it looks like a UFO has landed in my front yard. It's enormous, the lights are everywhere. And, and now they're going to put another building there, we're all for development of that area there, because it's, you know, it's been basically nothing for, for a long time. But just stay with the 77 feet allowed by code, we'll all be happy, and I think as well, somebody else mentioned it, I think it was the lady with the baby, we need protection from the city against developers. What happened with the plaza, I mean, we were completely caught off guard. We're not architects, we're not developers, you know, some of us are lawyers, but, you know, we need the city to protect us, stuff like this. So I hope you will do the right thing, just stay within the 77 feet, Mr. Morris can build a very nice place, I'm sure everybody will be happy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
William Plaza, Emilio Millares, Shelley Daniel, Sarah Conde, those will be the following speakers.
Good evening, board. My name is William Plaza, I reside at 55 Merrick Way, and my business is located at 1701 Ponce de Leon. I'm here to support the development due to the great benefits that it brings to the community, mainly for the park that's being built, which is, we have a darn need, darn need for. I live here with my three daughters, I actually own my own company, I do take the trolley to work, and I do work, walk to work as well. I, I believe the development is a great addition to our city, and it will be, again, bring great benefits to, to the need for more living spaces. Just to give you an idea, I brought, I, I brought my office from the Grove to the Gables, 17 people, all of them, all of them are looking to move to Coral Gables for that reason. Half of them have already secured spaces, the other half, it's extremely difficult due to the fact that there's no availability of, of living spaces. So I am here to support the development, and I hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Emilio Millares, 130 Madeira Avenue. I'm here to support the project. I think I followed a lot of the developments here in the city, I've been in the city for over 20 years, and I have a small CPA firm right off Ponce. I think it's gonna beautify that corner and bring great amenities to that area, so I'm just here to support the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shelley. And Sarah Conde.
Okay, where do we stand here? Hi, Shelley, Daniel Rutherford, 3720 Granada Boulevard, and it's a pleasure to be here. I have worked with you all a few times on previous projects, 'cause I don't like to like stand out in the limelight, but you, we had problems beginning the Coral Gables Museum, bam, it went through, and it's awesome for the city beautiful. We had problems doing the youth center with the light, bam, it has been incredible for our city. And I was dealing with Ralph Sanchez for George Merrick's original design over there, which was incredible, and it's grown because people need a place to stay, and everybody wants to live in the city beautiful. Something's gonna happen, 'cause people want to live here. You might as well have somebody that is working with you all's suggestion, I zoomed in two years ago, when Mr. Morris was denied his presentation, and now, what I've read in the papers, et cetera, he's done everything, he's complied with everything you all wanted to do. It sounds to me from the neighbors, and I really feel bad for you-
If you can please, Ms. Rutherford, if you can just address the board, please.
Okay, 69 years I've lived here, and I've seen it grow up, and I've seen a lot of my friends move away to St. Augustine in North Carolina, but this is the city beautiful, it's gonna happen, let's do it respectfully, let's do it with George Merrick's designs, and try to work together, maybe, this is only my own opinion, maybe broaden that University Drive, and I was under the impression that we're planning a beautification problem there, project there, let's do it nicely, without getting too big, keeping the coral rock to keep us the city beautiful. I think if someone's gonna do it, and they're gonna do it, we might as well have it beautifully done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Conde.
Hi, I'm Sarah Conde, I'm from 228 Alessio Avenue, I've been living here for 25 years. I wanted to note-
Can you speak into-
Can you lower your mic?
I wanted to note that the people in support of the project have businesses in the area, they don't live there. I live there. The whole area is changing. It's not good for our residences, it's not good for our quality of life, and nobody that's supporting it lives in our neighborhood. And I, I just feel that, I understand that the developer is a quality developer, and my hat's off to him, and I really would like him to do that quality development within the current zoning, just the way that I found it when I bought my house 25 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. So in-room speakers, do we have anybody else?
I have, if I could ask your indulgence, I have one more letter for someone who couldn't be here, would it be okay to read in?
Mr. Caller?
At this point, the counsel can forward the letter to the, to the clerk? Well, the, the letters are actually not considered substantial competent evidence, they're not testified to, so-
And the gentleman already had his turn.
Yes, so you're welcome to forward it to the clerk, and you can present it to them there.
Yeah, please understand, if, if that would be the case, then everybody else should have the right to do the same. Thank you.
So you can get with Jill and, and, and have her, have it transmitted as far as part of the record. Just one other, if they're concluding, one other housekeeping measure with regard to registering as a lobbyist that was raised earlier, there's an exception for lobbyists, which says the following persons are specifically excluded from the definition of lobbyist and shall not be subject to the requirements of this section, and under subsection A, any representative, individuals, corporation, other entity solely during a public hearing on a quasi-judicial matter. That is an exception under the lobbying rules.
Okay, Joe, we have some more speakers on Zoom?
Yes, we currently have three speakers on Zoom. Javier Baños. One moment, Mr. Baños, go ahead now.
Thank you very much for, yes, I hear you, you hear me? Thank you very much to the board members and to all the residents that showed up today to, to speak, and I can tell you, I've knocked on every door of the neighbors that are directly affected by this project. Everyone from University all the way south to, to, to Bird Road, no one, a single person wants this project to go through. This project is under the vacuum, as everyone has said, as Maria very eloquent to put forward. big hole. You're talking about this project where downtown is going to have significant density in the area. You have, now they're gabbing, going into, it's gonna be fully staffed and it's gonna have full residents once it's done. And the Godina project going up, you have a new project going up south of Bird Road, near Merrick Park. You have the projects that are going north of what used to be the craft section. As a residents now, it's gonna be a multi-faceted area. You know, I wish Alan would have been able to do the mobility hub because that is another increase in density in our downtown. He's a good developer. He's done great work in the city. There's nothing, there's not a judgment on him. But this project is not in a vacuum. It will, as the doctor said, create a wall from university all the way north and it will create a barrier. It will increase the density, but also there's no tapering. There's no tapering between the downtown and the residential area. And it will be an encroachment in the residential area. He wants to build it within code, if it requires a vacation of the alley in order to build it within the code, you can certainly take that into consideration. But I don't think that this neighborhood deserves this. They have already been significantly affected, negatively affected by the impact of the other project. This would be, as was said before, an answer to entry. I would recommend that none of you accept this project and be denied, even though it has been modified from what it was before. The modifications are not to the satisfaction of one of your residents.
Thank you, sir. Javier Baños.
Carelia Carbonell. Ms. Carbonell, can you open your mic, please? Ms. Carbonell? I'll go to the next speaker. Dr. Gordon?
Hello?
Yes, hello.
Please state your name and address, please.
Carelia Carbonell.
Okay.
Let's let Ms. Carbonell and then we'll take Dr. Gordon. Go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. I'm calling, we, as president of the Historic Preservation Association of Coral Gables, we have been tracking.
Could you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Yes, Carelia Carbonell, 532 Alterra Avenue. I'm calling just because we have been, as a preservation society, we have been tracking this project because of the fact that there are some historic implications within the project. Back in October of last year, the Historic Preservation Board denied both the vacating of the alley and the encroachment of University Drive. So I don't understand why this is an issue or an item once again when the Historic Preservation Board, which is a quasi judicial board, and I don't understand why I keep hearing a quasi judicial procedure here because, in my understanding, this board is an advisory board. So maybe I'm wrong, but that's how I've been understanding it. So number one, a vacation of an alley is part of the Coral Gables City Plan, which is a historic landmark. And in that plan, quote, alleys are one of several protected historic resources. Also, the zoning code only allows seven stories. This proposal, even when it has been somewhat diminished, is still about twice the zoning code. It also encroaches on, obviously, the University Drive area, which is part of the historic plan. And I'm gonna quote the historic plan very briefly. Merrick's Historic City Plan protects, quote, "lights of ways, parkways, roadways, alleys, open space, parks, swales, reservations, sidewalks, and waterways." So again, this project and no one, and of course, you know, Alan Morris is a very highly respected citizen and philanthropic and, you know, a wonderful architect or planner and developer and the project is a nice project. But why are these projects being proposed when they rely on public land? Okay, build the project within the land that is yours. So again, and just a reference to the Alhambra Tower, yes, it's a beautiful project. There was all kinds of concessions, but it's a commercial district. This is a neighborhood and you listen to the neighbors and the neighbors are against a project of this size. So keep it within the code, keep it at seven stories, don't use public land, that land is protected. And it has already been denied by the Historic Preservation Board back in October of 2021. And your board also denied recommending the project. So why are we, again, here with a very slight, I guess, alteration to the plan when all these things, you know, specifically the alley and the university? Because those are public and those are protected. And so please take into consideration that those have been denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Gordon?
Yes, hello. I would like to just make a few points. There are so many.
Excuse me?
Doctor Gordon, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yeah, sorry. Gordon Sokoloff, 225 Alessio Avenue. I live in this area. I live very close to where the project is being proposed, against the project as proposed. I believe it's going to diminish what's most sacred to the people who live here, which is the quality of life. It's going to increase the density. And again, as I used to say on the Transportation Board, the streets aren't gonna widen, so the traffic is only gonna get worse in that area. I empathize with my fellow residents, the ones that even live closer to it. And I wish that you as board members would sometimes maybe try to put yourself in their shoes and imagine, I noticed that everyone who gave an address, when they stated their name and address, if it wasn't in the area, I just kind of knew, well, they're gonna speak in favor of it. That's because they don't live there. And if you live right there, you're gonna be severely impacted, as these people have been severely impacted already by the plaza and it hasn't even opened yet. No one is arguing Mr. Morris's reputation or that he builds beautiful buildings. He does and a beautiful one in Alhambra is smack in the middle of downtown. No one's asking him not to build it. Everyone is asking him to build it to code. And these are codes, by the way, which are there to be enforced by you, by your panel. That's why they're there. And, you know, we just had the Plater Ziber code rewrite. You know, why even rewrite it if you're not going to abide by it? It is not standing by the codes or upholding the codes, which allows the city of Coral Gables and boards like yours and the commission like we have to turn their heads to one another and say, how did the plaza get here? I don't know. Well, this is your moment of truth. This is the time where you can enforce the codes as written, as determined by boards before yours and enforce it like everyone else has to abide by it. 77 feet, I'm sure Mr. Morris can build a beautiful project, but this is the moment of truth where you yourselves can forward this thing and stick to the code as written. And I hope that you do for the sake of the residents that live there and I wish you would put yourself into their shoes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anybody else, Jill?
We actually have three more speakers.
Okay.
Lisa Maroon.
Yes, hi, I'm Lisa Maroon. I reside at 608 Cudago Avenue. I was born and raised in Coral Gables. Thank you for allowing me to speak. And my mother Shirley Maroon and Roxy Bolton have been fighting these issues for decades and here we are still pleading with the board, asking the city not to vacate alleys and not to give away our land. And we're asking that the ones who want to come in and build buildings, just, they have to, they should be, have to just go by code. And that's where the city comes in to protect the residents. I also have a commercial building right near there, 3180 Ponce de Leon Boulevard. It's a family owned and I am a commercial owner and I am still opposed to this building and it needs to be scaled back. And really, the fact that you're changing zoning is another problem that we keep facing. That's a low-rise zoned area right now. It should only be 50 feet. And now here we are, changing zoning laws. And then we're vacating alleys and then we're giving med bonuses. So all these things add up to very poor quality of living and, you know, all these people that are there, I feel very bad that they live so close to that. And also, just remember, this could happen to any one of us at any time in the city if this continues to be allowed. Please vote no on this. And I agree with everyone that has spoken against this project. And it really needs to, we really need to be heard this time. And the fact that the plaza got built is horrifying. I don't know how that was ever allowed. And it's just, it's very sad and I hope we don't repeat the same mistakes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ibrahim Baraka.
Hi, my name is Brahim Barakat and I reside at 4510 Santa Maria Street. I've been a resident of the Gables for the last 12 years or so. I've grown up in Miami my whole life. I'm speaking in support of the project because I think it's a well-thought-out project. It's smaller than several buildings in the area. The area does have several sizable buildings already. And if you look at Ponce de Leon as a street, a lot of it is commercial already. And I think that this project is a natural outgrowth of the way that the street has been developing from Miracle Mile to the south. I think for a lot of citizens of Coral Gables, including myself, we're excited about the plaza development and for the development of Ponce de Leon as a whole. It's gonna be, once it's done, it's gonna be really nice to have other options for entertainment in the Coral Gables area so that we don't have to leave to go to Brickle or downtown or South Beach. And right now, we just kind of go to Miracle Mile and it's nice that there's gonna be more than just Miracle Mile available to us. I think it's gonna add a vibrancy to the area that's needed and I think it's being built on a lot that's just completely underdeveloped. And, you know, while anyone can sympathize with some of the residents that have already spoken and have expressed their fears, I think a lot of those fears are really driven by, you know, the plaza itself. I think whatever this building adds would probably just be incremental to that. But irrespective of that, I think when the decision is made, you have to think about all of the Coral Gables residents, not just the ones that live in the closest proximity to the space. If we only took into consideration what the residents in the immediate area felt, we wouldn't have any schools, the youth center, or any other public amenities because everybody subscribes to NIMBY. And if you get that George Carlin reference, I applaud you. But NIMBY means not in my backyard. And unfortunately, you know, NIMBY just doesn't work for a city as a whole. The city's growing and we need more residential space. So I think the project should move ahead because the building fits well in the area. It's a beautiful design and it's being built by a highly respected developer. Thank you.
Thank you.
David Hayes? David Hayes?
Can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and address, please.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, David Hayes, 300 Fluvia Avenue. Yes, I have concerns about this project. I think that the development of the plaza is going to bring a lot of, you know, added density and traffic and people in the area and we're waiting to see the effects of that. But, you know, that project is already done and hopefully there are a lot of cool things that we can go to there and so forth. But my concern is here is, you already have the plaza, you know, it already has, you know, above standard height. Across from that, you have the Regions Bank Building on the west side of Ponce de Leon Boulevard. Then going south, you have the Regency Coral Gables, which already tapers down to around seven floors. And then, you know, let's keep that tapering down on this side, then to pop back up to a mega story, a building there would really be awkward. I mean, in keeping with the building and the zoning there, it actually would fit in much better at this corner to stick down to the 77 feet because it would fit in with the tapering down effect that's already occurring on this side of Ponce. And really, this project, even at the 77 feet, is gonna add a lot of density, a lot more, a lot more residents. It's gonna generate a lot more traffic. It's already difficult for me, I ride the trolley sometimes to either go to downtown or to go to the metro station. It's already getting more difficult to cross Ponce with the extra volume of traffic even now and the plaza hasn't even opened. So, I mean, more density means more cars, more traffic. I mean, what are we gonna try to turn this Ponce corridor into another brickle? I mean, it's, it makes all sense. I'm not against any development. Just stay within the zoning. That side naturally is tapering down anyway as you move to the south. If you were to allow a, you know, a really super tall structure, it wouldn't fit in with what's happening on that side of Ponce anyway. It's already tapering down. It would just stick out like a sore thumb and it would cause like a bottleneck effect there visually anyway with the plaza project that's on the other side of Ponce, which sort of stands as like a kind of a pinnacle crowning jewel right there. So really, I mean, I, you know, you can allow a development there, but don't go over the 77 feet. That's what I would, that's what I applaud for. And I, you know, it really, I hear people talking about, oh, all the residents of Coral Gables, you know, everyone that lives around here have to live around and deal with the additional density that is right here. And, you know, it's not fair to us. I've been here 20 years and I didn't buy in to have this mega developments creeping closer and closer to my house and affecting my way of life. You know, if I wanted more and more density like that, I would move to Brickle. So, I mean, just please, just stay within the zoning that is now.
Thank you. Jill, any more speakers?
No more speakers.
At this time, I'd like to go ahead and close it for public comment. Mr. De Urie?
Yes, if I can have the original presentation that we had? And Mr. Tori, what does your schedule look like right now?
10 minutes.
10 minutes?
Jill, are we waiting for the presentation? There it is.
There it is.
You seem to go to the first, to the first slide, please? Almost there. There you go. Okay, thank you very much. There's a lot to unpack here and, you know, in a typical environment like this, the word tension was used. And so I'm gonna reference it because there's always this tension of the law and the recommendation and the substantial competent evidence that's established by staff by reviewing a project and then the wants. And it's a very difficult task that you have before you as members. you have before you as members. You have to understand that we have a recommendation, that recommendation did not drop out of the sky. That recommendation occurred because of these changes. And I heard words that I was very surprised to hear because many of the folks that you heard from, and to be honest with you, I don't, I don't want to call them out by name, but they've, they've had many meetings and this didn't happen by accident. The developer didn't go and create these concessions by accident. Number one, and these things are numbered because these are the numbers of importance from the people in the neighborhood, in particular, the members of the Santander, uh, block, which are immediately south of the plaza, east of Ponce de Leon. Almost everyone you heard from here that's in the area lives on that block. And I understand they've been, they've been impacted by the plaza. It's a million square foot project. We're talking about 80 units. Number one, they didn't want road FAR. We took it out. They wanted a reduction in density. Number two, we went from 161 units to 80. Those of you that are professional architects in the real estate industry, know this is not a small task. Reduction of the square footage significantly from our original plan to what we have now, it's five stories. Across the street in the plaza, as a little known fact, the tallest component of it is 297 feet overall in height. We're at 149. That's half the height of that tower. We're also half the height of the Regions Tower. There's another, not half the height of the Regions Tower, 40, 50 feet below the Regions Tower that predated. We're 40 to 50 feet below the tower that predated the plaza. We're also going to be 40 to 50 feet below whatever's to the south of us is zoned for 190 feet. So we are well within the context of the neighborhood pursuant to not just me telling you this, but the professional recommendation of staff. And that's the law component that creates the conflict with the wants. The luxury condo number five was requested of us specifically by the neighbors. They said the rentals, we don't want cheap brickle product. We want you to build the highest quality product, product possible. I've never seen it done before and the client did it. They moved it to condo because they felt that that would help their property values. And then lastly, number six, and it's in priority, of course, neighbors felt that the amount of parking would create more traffic. So we really gutted the parking that we had in the project by almost 100 units. I wanted to give that as a point of reference because that really is why we're back here. And that really is why we got the recommendation from staff. It was no small task and it wasn't easy and it wasn't due to a conspiracy theory because Mr. Ramon Trias is no longer the, uh, on, on city staff. Okay. This was a lot of work to get it here. And I'll only say the following because I have to state it for the record and I understand your time constraints, but substantial competent evidence means the department's recommendation, together with the testimony of the department representative you heard today alone constitute substantial competent evidence to support the approval. What doesn't support substantial competent evidence? And, and, and just to cite the case for, for reference, that's Village of Palmetto Bay versus Palmetto Trinity at 128 Southern Third, 19th, that's Florida, third district, DCA. What doesn't constitute competent substantial evidence? I'll reference City of Popka versus Orange County, which is a fourth DCA case. The City of Popka is, I'm just going to read straight from the case because it's, the case speaks for itself. The City of Popka denied a zoning application despite substantial competent evidence supporting the application. In our case, it's the recommendation from staff. Whereas in this case, the application was opposed by neighboring property owners. In reversing, the court said, the county's denial of the application, the court explained that the public hearing is not held for the purpose of polling the neighborhood. And that is unfortunately a difficult task you have here. You have the substantial competent evidence from staff professionally reviewing it. And the last thing I'll leave you with is objection by neighbors, which are not fact based, are not substantial competent evidence. And that's Canizas versus Mabey County, which is another, uh, Florida 11th Circuit case. The last thing, I'm sorry, and the final one, uh, you heard a lot about traffic, noise, light and shadows. Late witnesses, speculation about potential problems, about noise, pollution, light, and general unfavorable impacts of a project, however, are not considered competent substantial evidence. That's Pollard, uh, at 560 Southern Second, 1358, Florida, fourth DCA. And, uh, I promise this will be the last one I'll leave you with. But, uh, Florida law is very clear that property owners don't have a right to a view. This is settled seminal law. Number of cases over the years have replied on it. It's Fountain Blue, the 114 Southern Second, 357. Um, I gave the binder to the clerk with all these cases to add to the record. Um, and that's really about the context and character. You have a very difficult task because you have a substantial competent evidence that was already entered by staff. You have the law telling you what you can and cannot take into consideration. And you have the tension between the two, between the wants of the neighbors and the law that was already expressed by, uh, staff. The alley doesn't belong to the residents. It's an interest required by the municipality that's generally held in the nature of an easement. We own both sides of the alleyway, folks. Never has it been controversial in the City of Coral Gables, such a small alley, when you own both sides, it doesn't even serve back at house any longer. It is indiscernible if you drive through this lot. And it's being weaponized against us to try to create and twist some new controversy that doesn't exist here. I thank you very much for your time and I leave you to the difficult task, as I said before, between the substantial confident evidence that's already been established by the staff recommendation that did not happen by accident. It was through these significant concessions with the neighbors and the comments that were made today, which were opinion based. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to open it up for board comment. Uh, Vinnie, would you go first? Cause I know your time is limited.
I'm actually, I mean, I, I really need to answer a question of the staff because I'm confused about a couple of the photos. The slip lane, I think I saw it in some cases in, in some cases out. Maybe I'm reading it incorrectly. And I wanted to hear the staff's thought on the slip lane, or at least.
The slip lane, my understanding is remaining.
Is, is remaining? Cause I seen it with the park and I saw it without, I wasn't sure which one it was.
The historic preservation board wanted the slip lane to remain. Public Works does not like the slip lane.
Is it either or situation? That's not.
Hence the million dollars that'll go to some improvement.
Okay.
In, in that area. Do you want to add something, Hermes?
Good evening, Hermes. Yes, Poliworks Director. Generally speaking, slip lanes are not conducive to safe pace and crossing and visibility and issues of nature. So, uh, our preference will be that the slip, slip lane gets removed.
Right. So you're looking at a public works point of view on this versus a historic preservation point of view on the slip lane.
Go ahead, Vinnie.
I would have a lot more, I need to. If I could talk to that point, two seconds?
Yeah, but I'd like to hear just, Vinnie has to go soon. I will, uh, to talk on the point. Is there any other comment that you'd like to make? We welcome it.
I think the 80 units is a plus. And I think having high, you know, uh, high worth condos, I, I think that's a very positive thing for the downtown, um, versus having a lot more apartments. And I think the, the weighing here is that the density, whether you do it at 77, you do it at higher heights, you're still going to have a same mass. The question is what can you fit in the mass? And what is the best use of that mass, which in this case is 4.375 times the area. Basically, you're going to get to the same number of, of square feet to be built. To me is what is the best way to use the square footage that some developer is going to max out anyways. I think that the high end units for this area is the best and highest best used of the product that you can get here. So I think that's a, that's a very good thing. And I think 80 units is various, makes a very small impact on the community as a whole. So I think if you're going to look at impact, that's the best way you can impact the area. That's, that's the, the lowest impact you can get and the best way you can impact the areas to get those high worth units to happen. Again, many other ways could be developed. And I think that as I see this in this way, that, that was a happy thing for me to.
Thank you, Mr.
The slip lane, I, you know, again, I, I know that that's the decision, but that was my other concern.
Thank you, Mr. Yure. You want to make?
We're completely agnostic in regards to the slip lane. We'll do whatever the city wants. It's complete at the city's direction and taking whatever input it wants. We're here completely agnostic to that. And we've handed that over to the city. But we are still going to provide the improvements ultimately in the park because in the meeting with the neighbors, they said, don't use it, but still give us the improvements. Thank you.
So without getting into the details of impact, what I'm hearing is there's a lot of impact to the community or to the, to the residents and to the area. I go back to saying the, the smallest impact you can get is the smallest amount of units, the best quality type of units. If you're going to get anything else, this would be to me the optimal use of the, the, the space. And I need to get on a flight. So I need to leave. I apologize.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, Vinnie.
Are we going to vote on it with Mr.?
No, we're going to still discuss. He has to leave, so he won't be able to vote on it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Claudia?
Um, we're just having discussion right now.
Yes.
I don't think I have any, any questions. Um, I've heard a lot and I remember this project from when we heard it before. I do want to acknowledge, uh, Mr. Morris, I've never had the pleasure of meeting you. Um, I've heard wonderful things that my colleagues have said up here about you and I, I don't doubt anything. Your mother-in-law came to speak on your behalf. So I think that says a lot. Um, but notwithstanding I have, I do remember this project, the last time it came before us. And I do remember, um, that there was meetings and I'm not sure if it was, I, I also heard Mr. David Winker mention another, another Morris, Spencer Morris. I don't know who it was that had a meeting with the community. But I do remember that it was maybe two or three meetings, um, that, that was stated was with the developer themselves and, um, and that none of the concessions were made, um, that were asked for. And I, I know now that there's several concessions that have been made. Um, I'm not, I'm not exactly certain from what I hear and based on what the code is that, that it's enough. Um, just based on some of the, the comments I heard and, you know, there's, there's other concerns as well. I think that when we're talking about the, uh, the plaza project that everybody keeps on mentioning here and what a big project it was. And, you know, so many times I've sat up here, everybody's asking and, you know, I've even asked myself, how did this happen? And I think it happens incrementally, one meeting after another, um, when we ask for these changes. And, um, I think that also one of the concerns I have that I wanted to put on the record is when you talk about high rises and, and our police and fire, one of the, somebody spoke about police and fire and the fact that our fire department is understaffed and that we haven't added one firefighter in the last, I think 30 years. So yes, every time a firefighter retires, another one, um, is replaced. But we've never had, um, an increase in the last 30 years. And when you consider, you know, for those of you who said you've lived here a long time, when you consider the amount of growth that we've seen, um, over the last 20, 30 years, um, that, that, that shouldn't be. And I think that that causes a, a, um, it poses a danger for those who live in, in high rises. I also want to address, um, I'm not going to address them by name because I don't remember everybody, but I do have my notes. I did hear a lot of people who spoke on behalf of the project. There was a Realtor who said that there was, you know, a lot of people that are moving into the area from the outside. And I just wanted to say that my concern is for us, and I say us because I'm a resident of Coral Gables, for those of us who are impacted, those who are, who are already here. I've only been here 17 years. I think that's nothing in comparison to some of the years that some of the folks that have spoken today, um, have mentioned. But I think it's, uh, it's important to say we need to care about the residents and what they think. Um, and, and again, I wanted to say to Mr. Morris, I, I think that you've done a great job. I think that you've been a wonderful, um, community partner in so many ways. And I don't doubt that the work that you do is quality or the work that you will be doing is quality. Um, I just want to look at him real quick. That's okay. I do know, you know, uh, from, from what I've seen and from what I've heard. And I think that I'm just leaning towards, you know, somebody else said, um, one of the other speakers that spoke in favor of this said about that corner just being blight and how ugly it was. And there used to be a quick stop there and all this other stuff. I still think that we can, um, that Mr. Morris even can put a beautiful project there, but that it can be, um, more consistent with, um, what the zoning code is asking for. And I do say, I did hear Mr. De Yure, your comments. I always love to hear your presentations. I think they're on point. And I saw, you know, the lowering the units by half and the density and, and also what my colleague Benny Tori said. But at the same time, um, when you, when you look at that concession, yes, it's a big concession. But when you look at what the code is asking for, what you're asking for, it's just such a huge number. And I'm, I'm not, um, against development. I think there was a Ms. Rutherford that spoke and she was talking about, you know, um, she kept saying, it's going to happen. It's going to happen. Um, and I think what she meant by that, or I'd like, the way I interpreted is that we're going to grow. We're going to involve, we're going to evolve. Focus on Santander, you know, San Sebastian, we're going to grow. It's going to happen. Yes, it is. We're going to evolve. But we'd like to hope that that evolution takes place, um, within the code. And if you came to me and I'll be very, you know, transparent about that and you said, okay, the code calls for 77, you're asking for 87, 90, I can consider that. Um, but close to double, it, it just, it causes concern because I feel, um, as someone who has knocked on the doors of this community and has, has gotten to know what the neighbors have to say about what's been happening development wise in our community, I feel that this community has not healed from the plaza project. And it's still very, um, it's something that was a very soft spot. Somebody else said, I think it was Mr. Barracat. I think he said something about, um, that they, he feels that the community might have, the fear that they have is driven by the plaza. Uh, yes, it's driven by the plaza. Absolutely. Um, so, you know, and the other thing that, that I take note was one of the first speakers, I think it was Ms. Maria Cruz, when she talked about the, um, staff's report four days before. I, I think that as a city, being the city beautiful, being the most affluent city south of Manhattan, we should do better for our community. We should do better. We should be able to present the city's, um, position into a point where there's time to look at it and say, you know, this is good or this makes sense, or if it doesn't make sense. And that you're not doing it when you're scrambling to figure out if, oh my goodness, they're doing it again, or this is going to happen again. Um, the other thing that I thought was interesting that kind of, um, concerned me was the, the traffic study. So when you talk about how did these things happen and was there a traffic study? Yes. Was this happened? Did that happen? And all the answers are yes. But when you have a traffic study in the middle of a pandemic where nobody's out driving, can you really rely on that traffic study? Can you really say that that is, that you've done your due diligence? Um, and, and I would, you know, argue that no, that you haven't. Um, and I'm trying to just go through, you know, some of my notes here. And again, when we talk about, Mr. De Yure was talking about, you know, what we can consider and what we can't consider of, you know, legally or what the law asks you to consider from the comments that were made and citing, you know, sticking to the law. I'd like to stick to the law. I'd like to stick to the, um, to the code. I'd like to stick as close as possible to the code. I'm not saying we're not flexible with that. That's why we're here to hear different, you know, um, projects when they, they're called for. Um, is the area ugly right now? Maybe. But I do feel that if, you know, if not Mr. Morris, someone else will come up with an opportunity to show something that would be more transitional to this area. And, um, you know, and when we talked about substantial competent evidence, the plaza did that, right? But here we are. And, um, I just want to make sure that any developers that come, um, to propose, you know, here or any other area that they consider, um, not just their vision, because I appreciate, again, Mr. Morris, that you have, you're a visionary man. But we have to be, um, considerate about not just one person's vision or one developer's vision, but also, you know, um, the communities that are going to be living in the shadows of, of those visions and what, how are they impacted? How had they already been impacted? I just think it, I think it was maybe too soon. Um, again, we haven't seen the real impact of that plaza and some of all these other developments that are, haven't been, um, I guess vacant, there, there's no vacancy. There's, they're still vacant. There's, people are not living in them yet. We still don't know the full effect. So, so those are some of the, the concerns, um, that I hear and, um, that are, you know, on my mind here as we get ready to consider, um, the items. Also, I thought it was interesting that Mr. Tori brought up the, the order of things. And, you know, and hearing the comments that if one thing doesn't happen, the whole thing doesn't happen. And so, um, those are things that I'm listening to. And, and again, I just want to say that every time I come here, I've been serving on this board for about a little over a year. I never come with my mind made up. I always come with an open mind to listen and hear both sides. And so, um, you know, thank you for everyone who has come and has helped, um, you know, educate me on how they're impacted and, you know, and also the efforts by the applicant and, uh, the explanation the applicant has given. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, if you just hold your applause, please.
I'm sorry. I would like to make some clarification on the traffic study. The original traffic study was done around November 2020. Um, and the data was during the pandemic. However, they actually looked at data prior to the. however, they actually looked at data prior to the pandemic, and they developed a picking factor to normalize the data to pre-pandemic levels, and that's what was used for the traffic study. That being said, the revised project, the threshold for the net trips, is actually below the threshold where a traffic study wouldn't be required, so the traffic study itself was not updated with a new project, because the code no longer requires, because it's below the fifty, the, the change in trips is below fifty, so the traffic study was not required, I'm sorry.
Well, can I ask?
Yeah.
So, do those numbers include projections from the building, across the new building, the new?
So, the, the original traffic study was pretty...
I mean, the re, the recalculated numbers, they include the, the, the building that everybody calls?
They didn't do a new traffic study, did a new trip generation report.
Okay, so they didn't include any of the traffic generated from that?
They, they didn't update the traffic study, because on their, the current code, if you have less than fifty trips added, trip generators not required, so, so what is in the books is the old traffic study for the previous development, so no updates were done.
But it didn't include any of the projections from the?
No.
No.
It's just a strictly trip generation report for the new building.
And I just wanna clarify the staff reports, and I just, I, I just wanna get some of my background, I'm an engineer, I'm not a planning person, but I'm an engineer, and I like to deal with facts, things to me are sometimes very black and white, and I, I listen to everything that everybody's saying here, and I, I understand, and I go and ask my city planner, you know, why do we have to go through this process, like, what's going on? So, as for the staff report not being ready until Friday, being published until Friday, that's how they do every project, I just verified that, it has nothing to do with Ramon, or anything else, in fact, I don't know if Mr. Morris even knows who I am, other than that I introduced myself here today, because I have never met with Mr. Morris or Anthony De Jure on this project, I strictly went with the recommendation that was prepared by staff, under Ramon's direction, and gave my input on what I thought was better for the city, if we're gonna get a park, I want a park by a certain date, I don't wanna leave it overended, so there's things like this.
It's, we, we're closed to the public, please, let him speak, thank you, continue, please.
And as, when, when I hear that the, you know, staff recommends, staff recommends, the code requires that we provide a recommendation, but it's not that we are endorsing any particular project, or any particular developer, I, I hear the snickering, and it's kinda sad, because I'm really speaking very truthfully, I am not a political person, I am a very, like, you know, honest person, I probably say what I shouldn't say sometimes, but, you know, that's the facts, I don't think that I for sure have no interest in it being, you know, Mr. Morris, or whatever, and I just wanna make it clear that when we give a recommendation, it's a staff, it's a requirement of the code, but it's not an endorsement, there is a difference.
I just wanna say, I, I didn't take it as an endorsement, and my comments were that we could do better, you just said, you know, there, all the projects come, the reports come out three, four days, well, I personally don't think that's acceptable, you know, just because that's where we've always done something, doesn't mean it can't be revisited, and so that's why I was just saying that we, I think we could do better, so that, that our residents can have more time to kind of, you know, not having the expertise that, you know, that you guys have on, you know, as architects, engineers, you know, these are laypeople, and I just was reiterating that, you know, I never alluded to any relationship or any, you know, knowledge, or I'm just saying that that's what our community deserves, is more time.
I think that would be more in line with a precedence, or more in line with a course of action, as to how it needs to work within the city, and not specifically just to one project.
Correct.
I mean, that's, it's different. Louis?
I've been quizzing myself on, on how to analyze this, and I ask myself, if this project was seventy-seven feet high, it would lose seven floors, well, you lose forty-nine units, I think seven units per floor, and that's a hundred cars, more or less, and I don't think a hundred cars less is gonna make, despite any traffic study that anybody can do, it's gonna make a big difference on, on the project, I, I do believe that I have seen, to my surprise, that people from out of South Florida are willing to pay for property nowadays, coming from this country and out of the country, and when they buy a property at a certain price, these developers are asking me, and I'm sure other architects, maximize whatever you can do, and this project, at, at its current zoning classification, I wouldn't be surprised that if Mr. Morris didn't develop this, somebody's gonna come, this project, this parcel of land will get developed, and whoever comes, they might say, you know what, I'm just gonna put an office building here, and that's gonna bring more traffic, or I'm gonna put just rentals, and you know, the neighbors don't want rentals, but I can put rentals, and that's gonna bring more traffic. I, since the very beginning, when I saw this project first, and for the record, I don't want to annoy anybody, but it's driving me nuts, that lot thirty-four to the south, the closest one to the family, single-family home district, is actually zone high-density, to me, this is, I have no idea why when, because we talk about the code, we gotta meet code, but when I look at the code and the land use plan, this piece of property is sandwiched to the south, to the north, and to the east, by high-density zoning classification. So, when I looked at the plan, I said, this must have been a mistake, I think, I remember asking, no, we don't know what happened, I have yet to find why this piece of property here was left out the way it is right now, so, when, when you talk about following the code, I, and I'm sorry, as an architect, I'm always being maybe obsessive, I am obsessive, I, is, is this correct, or is this a mistake? Because at that point, on the basis of you gotta follow the code, if the code, not through fault to anybody, made a mistake in the land use plan, or the zoning classification, then we're starting kinda crooked, and I'm saying, at seventy-seven feet, let's say that you do that, you're gonna dump with seven less floors, potentially an office building or rental building, with a lot more traffic, and, and this property is to the north of all this single family, we're in the northern hemisphere, the gentleman was saying, I'm gonna get a shadow of my backyard, depending on where he is, and I didn't catch where exactly where it is, the sun will hit in winter, the worst possible time, at its lowest point, the longest shadow, but it's gonna cast it east of Ponce, and east of Ponce, we have the, the famous Plaza, and Malaga, I, I have been surprised, the first time, and this time now, I don't believe I heard anybody from Malaga complaining about this, if I lived in Malaga, I might have been thrown in jail complaining about this, but I haven't seen anybody from Malaga come and complain, and Malaga, I, I drive, by the way, and you said, visited the site, maybe I should have mentioned that, I drive through here twice a day, in the morning, because I live in Castillo, I cut across, uh, Sevilla, whatever I can cross, depending on the traffic, only June, I make my way to Ponce, and then I drive south on Ponce to Burt, and I go to my office in Coconut Grove, when I come back, I come through Thirty-seventh, cut to Coconut Drive, I then take Malaga, and a lot of times, I make a ride in Malaga, just because I have tremendous discomfort continuing in Malaga, and at this time of my life, mending my neck to see if somebody's coming in from the one-way of University Drive, it's, it's dangerous to me, I, if this project was two stories high, I would be asking Public Works in the City, close that offshoot of University Drive, I don't care who gets benefit of it, and, and I, I think that little island there, is an eyesore, so, I am not in agreement of any city giving away a property for free. I believe that the alley, it's, it's relevant, as a matter of fact, if this project was three stories, four stories, seventy-seven, I will be advocating and voting for in favor of vacating the alley, so when I put everything on a balance here, what would make a difference for me to vote against a project at a hundred and forty-nine feet, and voting yes for a project at seventy-seven feet? And I don't find that many compelling reasons not, not to vote in favor of a project that, yeah, it's seven stories high, it's got fifty more units, but I can tell you that any developer that comes in and says, you know what, I gotta cut fifty units, I wouldn't be surprised he walks, who's coming behind him? An office building developer? A rental building developer? And there's probably a line of people that would be willing to do that, so, again, I, I'm, forgive me if I'm rumbling, and, but, you know, I, I'm trying to analyze this from both sides, and I don't find a lot of compelling reasons to recommend to the City Commission to deny this project, so, those are my thoughts, and...
Thank you, Louis.
That's the best I can do.
Chip?
Thank you, first of all, I know I'm gonna upset some people tonight, and they're friends of mine, on my comments, but I've known Allen for fifty years, and he's, he's, I think, one of the finest individuals in the city, and I appreciate everything he's committed to, from Chamber of Commerce to the beautiful building on Alhambra, however, there, there are three things I wanna say to preface my remarks, and the first is that, as beautiful as that building is on Alhambra, it's been used today to, to the new development, and I, I don't think that's fair, because it's in a totally different part of the city, that's number one. Number two, I don't think the developer is giving any concessions, because to me, a concession is something you already have, and to go from two-hundred feet or a hundred-and-ninety feet and say we're giving you back something is not really a concession, it's something you, you never really had, so, I don't really agree with the word concession, maybe I have agreed to reduce what I originally asked for. And then number three, we all agree that the, the Gables development there on Ponce, I, I was involved on the commission early on, when we agreed to develop that property, and I can tell you that the original vision was nowhere close to what it ended up, and so to compare that now that that's built, we can build something similar, I think is, is incorrect. So, saying that, I, I do have some questions for staff about open spaces, and what is our, what is our definition of an open space? Because from what I understand, the alley vacation, which by the way, I don't have a problem with alley vacations, when an owner owns both sides of the property, and there's no other use, and the, and the city signs off on it, public works signs off on it, fire signs off on it, police signs off on it, I, I really don't have with an alley vacation, but in this case, I have a question, if I understand, they have a ten percent public open space requirement on, on, on our zoning code, is that, is that what the requirement is, ten percent?
City planners checking right now what their percentage is.
And so, my question is, is, if I, if I read this presentation correctly, the, the alleyway that we are vacating is gonna take up seven percent of their requirement, of their public space requirement, is, is that, is that correct?
So, the open space, landscape open space means a ground-level outdoor area, which is open and unobstructed, in the lowest level.
That's the definition of an open space? So, how is a paseo, how, how does that, how does that comply with open space? To me, an open space means you can look up and see the blue sky, it doesn't mean you're looking up and seeing a slab above you, so I'm just curious to know how that definition of an open space applies, and, and it's ignorance on my part, because I, I'm truly curious.
So, the ten percent, according to the definition of the code, is ground-level plazas and courtyards open to the sky and accessible from the front.
Open to the sky?
Yes.
Is this alley open to the sky?
Yeah.
I'm asking, I'm, I'm just curious, I mean, I've, I've looked at, I've looked at this a hundred times, and can you sit in that alleyway that's now a paseo and look straight up and see the sky?
Sure, so, the alleyway, just to clarify, is not counted as part of our open space, the only open space that we have is the arcade and the right-of-way improvements, and the arcade is allowed to count towards open space if seventy-five percent of the materials within that arcade are pervious, which they will be, and we denote that on one of our sheets, and then open space is allowed for right-of-way improvements when they're substantial. So, we're allowed to do, for example, in this case, we make right-of-way improvements, technically they're not on our site, but we've made the improvements that are so substantial, they're allowed to count for our open space, so you have a combination of both, the right-of-way improvements, and the improvements within the arcade, because we're doing, we're allowed seventy-five percent of the square footage within the arcade, because we're doing pervious materials, not the alley, the alley's not counted for any.
Okay, okay, good, because I, I was really, again, I thank you for clearing that up, so...
Chip, can I ask you a question? When you refer to the alley, you're referring to the new paseo, because the, the current alley is open to the sky, but the new paseo, obviously it's not open to the sky, and you're wondering if that paseo is being counted towards open area, I'm just trying to clarify your question, but, okay.
And they say no, it might, I mean, that's...
Understood.
The architects have to help me out on this one, because I'm...
No, no, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm a lead, but, what I'm, what I just heard is that the improvement that you're doing in the right-of-way does count...
Open space, that's my next question.
And that's not in your property, it's outside, just because you're improving it, you're counting it.
Yeah, twenty, twenty-one thousand feet, that was my next follow-up question.
I'm thinking the wind out of Chip.
No, but thank you, no, that was my, that's exactly what I was gonna ask, if it's not your property, and you're improving it, that counts as your open space?
But I think the question is, does the code allow it?
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Correct.
Right, and it's in the staff report, and the city planner's here, but she could go ahead and answer her question.
Yes, the Med Bonus in Table One, number six, I'm sorry, number eight, allows for right-of-way improvements for those ten percent to count, the right-of-way improvements account towards your ten percent requirement.
And that's in the zoning code?
Right, yeah, it's in the Med Bonus.
So, the park across from the slip, that new park, that counts as open space for them, even though they never owned it, and they're...
Right.
And they're really not donating a million dollars, they're using that million dollars to create open space for them to benefit the project, I mean, is that how it works?
And that's why it's a conditional use.
No, no, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to get this, because there's a, a million dollar donation on the table, but it's really not a donation, it's the improvement of our space so they can count it to be used as their, their open space.
And if a million dollars is not enough, who's gonna put the rest?
Well, yeah, that's the point, but I'm just, so that's, that's how our code, I mean, I, I mean, I just have a little something, that just, anyway, that just doesn't seem... I mean, our code actually says that you can take our right-of-way and improve it, and count it towards open space for your property.
Yeah, it says specifically, this landscaper is talking about the percentages that are required for non-residential or mixed use, and says this, this landscape area can be provided at street level, within the public right-of-way, planters boxes, planters, and other ground floor locations.
And where is that from?
It's in the Med Bonus, Table One.
Med Bonus Two, and so that's what they're applying, okay, so my next question then is, the, the actual square foot of the building really hasn't changed, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
It hasn't really, I mean, the actual footprint...
From the twenty-twenty-one...
It's just that the, whereas they were gonna, they wanted that, originally, they wanted that, you call it a slip street, or whatever it's called, they originally wanted that as part of the original proposal, and so that was, that was the reduction in square feet, it really wasn't the reduction in the footprint of the building, am I understanding that correctly? Okay, so, the reduction of ninety-two parking spaces, how many floors is that?
How many floors that is? One floor?
One floor, so, so the ninety-two spaces, so, so of the, is that, is that right? I don't, you know...
Approximately one to one and a half floors.
Okay, okay.
Because we're only doing eighty units now, instead of the one sixty.
Right, I understand, and so you're, you're lowering the density, which, you know, we just did that last meeting, we, we were all excited about a project that reduced the, the density from two-hundred and some to a hundred and some, okay, so, so the, the reduction in height was really partly...
Chip, can I, can I ask you a question, just because you brought something up before I forget about it? If they would not have Mediterranean bonuses, would they then not be able to use the open space across the street?
Correct, yeah, the, the right-of-way, the allowance to use the right-of-way is towards your open space, is only in the Med Bonus.
And the fact that the Mediterranean bonus, the code has changed or is changing?
About styles, it doesn't affect this.
It doesn't affect this, okay.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that, I mean, I, no, I wasn't aware of that.
I wasn't either, that's fine.
Okay, so let me make, get my heights, what I understand, this, you can go fifty feet on this property now, and then you can add another twenty-two feet with Mediterranean Bonus Level Two, is that, is that what it was? Okay, or you can go a hundred and fifty feet, and you can go another forty feet with Mediterranean Bonus Two. In the F I, F A R, the T D Rs are primarily to keep the F A R at a sustainable level, because it's really not a height issue in this case, is that, is that correct?
No, T D Rs are just the square feet, to be able, be able to fill up that envelope that you're creating.
Okay, okay, I'm clear with that, so, I guess, I guess my question is, if, if you're, if you're at a hundred and fifty feet, and you can use, and they're going to a hundred and forty-nine feet, and was, is it two-thirds of the building can be used as a, as element, architectural element? element, architectural element on the top of the building? What's the code?
That's in the C B D, that would apply for this project.
So, what is the code for ornamental and engineering, I guess, engineering, air conditioning units, et cetera, and then ornamental on top of that?
Architectural features could go up to 25 feet for a portion of the building.
Well, that's in the C B D, or is that here also? That's my question.
That's here also, it's a mixed use. In the C B D, it's one-third.
Right.
One-third, okay. So, they can, so they can go 25 feet, so that could be, really be 175.
But that's for architectural elements, and only for a portion of the...
So, what could the total height of this building be with the ornamental and the architectural?
I guess the 190 plus a 25 feet?
No, no, current with them, with, right now, with the 150-foot height they're proposing right now.
With the current, with the current code classification.
Right. Oh, the current code?
Mm-hmm.
The 75 plus, 77 plus 25.
Right.
100 feet. So, they could go 100 feet right now with that, but, or they could go 100 and...
But architectural features, which are not the whole...
No, I understand, I understand, you know, I understand.
Oh, Jennifer Garcia, city planner.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess the last question I really have is, you know, philosophically, we have a code, and you kind of alluded to this, and I'm not asking you to spill your, you know, your guts on this, but, but, you know, if we have a code, how does, how does staff, when they make a recommendation, how do they say we approve something that so far apart from our code? I mean, what is the justification? The public good, that it's a nice building and we need more condominiums downtown, that it's going to beautify an ugly corner, it's going to, I don't know, you have a nice park in front so people can walk, I mean, what is staff, and what goes through staff's mind?
So, that's the criteria for a pad, which is not what the request is. So, each request has different criteria that should be listed in your staff report, such as, I guess I can pull some up.
No, no, I read it, I read it. You asked, does it do this yes, does it do this yes, does it do this yes?
Yeah, does it mix use, allow for...
All those philosophical kind of things.
Trip capture and, and, you know, walkability, and does it implement the comp plan, and the goals and policies of the comp plan.
So, what's more important, the code, or are the philosophical arguments that they meet, in your mind, in your personal opinion?
That's, that's...
I think first they have to...
No, no, I, because I really, and I'm not, and I'm not trying to throw you under the bus or anything like that, but I'm sorry, honestly, and again, this is where I'm probably upsetting Alan and his family and Dorothy and all that, but I really have an issue with, you know, our code at 50 feet, and you go 77 feet, and that's been changed, it's been reviewed, we rewrote it three times and left it the same, has the same, you know, land use, has the same comprehensive plan, and yet, we're changing it because it meets these environmental...
Well, that's the request. The code allows them to request before the board and before the commission if they can change that. So, that's the way their code is written, with criteria, meaning that criteria, meaning the comp plan, you know, trip capture, mix of uses.
Right, and that's why it was important for me to clarify that what she's doing is she's going through these points and seeing, does it meet these items? And if it does, the recommendation would be approval. That's what staff can do. Staff can't just say, well, we don't like the project, we're going to say no.
But, but that recommendation of approval, then, the zoning code just doesn't matter, then?
No, they still meet the zoning code per the requests.
I mean, as far as the height and the F A R and...
If they're granted the request.
If they're granted the request.
Right, and whether they're granted the request or not is...
Up to you.
Up to you and the commission, it's not up to staff, right?
No, I get that, obviously, but philosophically, you, you say yes, we're in favor of this project.
Based on the criteria, right. Based on comp plan, policies, and goals.
But not, not the actual zoning code itself?
And the actual zoning code, yes.
I mean, as far as height and densities and all that stuff.
But they're meaning the zoning, they're meaning their requested zoning.
It's not philosophical, though.
It's not.
Okay. I mean, just, just a comment, I just see that, I just see that staff has a checklist, and they go through the checklist, does it meet this, does it meet this, does it meet this, and does it meet this? If it does, then they give a recommendation.
Does the request meet? Does the project...
The requirement.
Yeah, exactly. Does the request meet what the goals are, and of course, the land use and all that? And she...
Understood.
I gotta say something, you know...
Go ahead.
Can I ask one quick question?
Just one second.
Wait, 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 she has to say something.
I'm done, by the way, thank you. Thank you very much.
You know, whether it's 77 feet or 500 feet, this is not a life safety issue. I'm used to dealing in things in life safety where I can't just choose to say, we don't want to do 50 pounds per square foot, we want to do 20. Well, you can't do that, right? But this is your city. You all set these rules. So, if you want to change, make a recommendation to change it to 500 feet, that's what the commission will approve. That's who sets it. It's not that staff set it, it's not that it's a magic number, it's that this is the way the city has historically wanted to develop.
Understood. Thank you. Robert?
I have one quick question from the staff. Does anybody know the history, sorry, does anybody knows the history as to why this parcel of land still remains with the zoning classification that it has, as when you see the land use plan, it's surrounded by, pretty much, by high density? Who knows the history from the staff? I asked that question before, and nobody could answer it, because I believe this is like a inconsistency in the land use plan, in my opinion.
Are you familiar with...
I don't know the history.
Mr. De Urr, do you know the history that you can...
Sure. So, the zoning code has zero to do with our request in regards to the height. The city of Coral Gables decided approximately 20 years ago to make the height part of the comprehensive plan in specific feet, and create the concept of low, medium, and high in the comp plan to have the comp plan control the height. There was no such animal in, in the zoning, there was no such animal in the comp plan before then. This has always been zone commercial, it's been zone commercial from day one. Why did they do what they did in regards to the comp plan about 20 years ago when they started to say, you're low, you're medium, you're high, because across the street where the plaza was, there was already a high-rise? Okay? The Regent's Tower was already there at the time as well. What was here at this site and historically been at this site was a White Castle, a gas station, and a Quickie Mart. And so, when they looked and saw the heights 20 years ago, it is reflective of what was there at that time, but it's always been commercial, and it's never, prior to the comp plan, designating these low, medium, and high, it was never previously designated a height, and so why, to Mr. Huerta's point, it is bizarre that you have everything surrounding us, and that's why we got the staff recommendation, because the context and character of the area, this is the hole in the donut. There is no other property on Ponce that is low-rise, commercial, anywhere near this park, and in fact, the property to the south of us is 190 feet, high-rise, commercial. Why? Because the Avenue of Ponce is wide, and that's one of the reasons, and I'll let Mr. Vahar, I know he wants to speak on it, he's the architect, he could, he could do a better job than me.
But we were here, but we were here before...
Thank you.
What he described is that this was left like that by eye bowling it.
No, no, no.
Because we sat with Charlie...
For, for many, 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 many meetings, we, the two of us, I was, you know, 20 years ago, we were here, and, and this came up, and respectfully disagree, that was not why it was left like that. I don't think 20 years ago, you were in the practice of law yet, which, okay? So, we, we, that was intentionally left like that, it was looked at, more so, the, the reason that the courthouse, which was not a courthouse before, that was a grocery store if I remember, that was never changed back because erroneously, it was designated high-rise way before, high density, and it was never reverted back, my recollection.
Which is Law 34.
Correct. And there was opposition to go back, but it was because I myself, and in this board, I'm probably one of the most pro-development in this board, we, we talked about it, and it was agreed at that time when Charlie Seaman was the consultant to the city to leave it the way it was.
As high density.
Because we could not change it, but leave this property as a low-rise, as a transition to the...
To the neighborhood, to the south.
To the neighborhood, to the south. That was my recollection.
Same.
Okay? But now, let, let me, so, may I? If we could put up that slide that you had, the six items, if they could do that, please, and while we'll do that, I'm gonna start with the same way that today, some of my friends and colleagues here, the same way Chip started, may not be very pleased with some of my comments. Unfortunately, you and I are going to be in the same, same position.
There you have it.
And before we start, I have a question for Mr. Collier. The applicant's attorney cited four or five cases as a reference for a position that staff recommendation that would, would make references to, to, to this recommendation from staff, but in my opinion, that doesn't mean anything because in this particular case, we're asking for a zoning change, and it's not as of right. So, is it really relevant what he's, the reference is making?
Well, let me say this. With regard to substantial competent evidence, it is true that a department recommendation is substantial competent evidence, however, a board does not have to rubber stamp a recommendation by a department, and there may be testimony, other testimony that you've heard today which would constitute substantial competent evidence, substantial competent evidence. And, and for example, I'm thinking of a case, I think, I believe it's the Blumenthal case, where a layperson got up, looked at the, looked at a line and said, okay, the density here is at 20, and they want to go to 16 here, but right here, it's 15, and we think this should be 15, and the court said, yes, that's also considered substantial competent evidence when somebody testifies, okay, what's near this area? So, the fact is, yes, you do have, department recommendation is deemed substantial competent evidence, but, and you have to base your decision even on, not so much a comp plan is really legislative, but all the other recommendations are based on substantial, all the other items in here are based upon substantial competent evidence, but that can include from various sources, does not have to just be solely the department.
Thank you. Yeah, can we put that, that slide back? I, I, I do take offense when I see this, and telling us that, look what we're doing, you brought a project that clearly, by the whole entire board, we were completely against it, and to come back and says, oh, we're doing this less, we're doing less F A R and five less floor, that is, to me, as an architect and as a board member, insulting. I'm sorry. That, that, what you brought before has nothing to do with what we should be looking at, in my opinion, and that's, we don't... I, I, again, don't compare, let's not compare that to this project, and I, I think, as I will encourage my board members to do the same. Let's not compare what was presented to us a year ago and says, I'm doing this, therefore I should be approved. And I'm gonna start by saying that I do not have some issues with some of the requests that you are requesting today, okay? Practically for most of them. The vacation of the alley, you're vacating approximately 3,000 square feet, you're getting times a 4.375, you're getting approximately 13,000 and change in development right, in F A R.
Correct.
What are we getting, what is the city getting for that? Because you're putting a million dollars into improvement of a right-of-way improvement that, for open space that you're getting. So, I don't see that million dollars being beneficial to the city. I see it, again, and I know some members in this audience today that constantly go against me because I am an architect, I am pro-development, but I want to see what's good for, as a resident, as a business owner of this city.
The staff recommendation specifically went through the codified evaluation requirements, and one of the things that we did specifically was to go to a pedestrian paseo almost mimicking the alleyway, and that was above and beyond the requirements that were codified and made very evident had to be met. That's primarily, in addition to meeting, what, what else do we need besides meeting the code, owning both sides, it not being any further service, it's reviewed by staff, and then we also, on top of that, do what nobody else does, which is replace it with a paseo.
But Mr. Ruby, to meet the med bonuses, and staff who could tell you, you need the paseo when you have a situation like this. This is not, you're not doing, you're not profiting paseo just because you're...
It was, the original iteration of this paseo was much farther to the west and directly north and south, this was much more expensive to do and done in conjunction with staff and the Board of Architects.
So, your paseo is beneficial to the city and is required by code, therefore, the 13,000 square feet F A R should be granted with no benefit in return to the city?
If, I'm not going to go as to what the code should read or shouldn't read, but what I can tell you is, specifically on page six, the standards for review are outlined one at a time, and each one of them is met by your professional staff establishing the substantial competent evidence for it, unless somebody says, I'm an expert, I know better than staff does, and I, what I'm hearing is you disagree with the code requirements. And if that's the case, that's a different conversation, because we met the code requirements, and on top of that, we did this, which was much more expensive to do, instead of doing it, where you see the driveway to the left, that was our original paseo.
But, but, listen, I, I deal with this every day. Please don't tell me that the paseo to the left where the driveway is, is less expensive than doing it there.
When you do, when you look...
Now, you put a loading space on University where the paseo was.
We originally, money and costs in the original scenario were not that, and we didn't do it that way because it was more expensive, we did it because it was more efficient, and when they made the change, retail bays got cut up, and yes, loading docks had been reinvented. Obviously, we went through architectural costs, Oppenheim, yourself, all these architects take a lot of time to do this work, and so, but, but monetary, if you want a monetary quid pro quo, that's not how the code reads to do it. But we did everything we could above and beyond the code requirement, and I'm just speaking of that point, and I appreciate the comment.
I, I mean, listen, you're trying to convince me of something that we're going to be here to...
No, no, I'm just...
Tomorrow, you're not going to convince me. It's not going to happen.
It's just a record that I'm creating.
Okay.
I'm just creating a record, that's all.
Okay, so, the, you're eliminating the parking on University, the 90-degree parking, which I think is good. I, I'm in favor of keeping the slip lane, because I myself, when I'm heading Sazbanon on, on Ponce, I do use it. It may not be what the Public Works Director may recommend, but I, 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 I think it'll be good, and it's...
Just don't drive a sporty car through there fast.
No, I don't do that.
No, drive a sporty car.
I don't have, I have a feeling.
Robert, if I may, just because of our time.
I'll make a motion to extend for 15 minutes?
To 9:15?
In the start of that.
I want to make sure it wasn't my fault.
Thank you, Mr. De Urr. We have a motion to extend to 9:15. Claudia, a second. Any comments? No? Call the rule, please. Everybody in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? No? It carries. Go ahead, Robert.
So, I, I'm in favor of elimination. I'm glad that you're not using that area for your gross area calculation, a lot, you know, so, that's good. I, in your presentation, which I'm, don't, don't like to see where, we do have a 14-story building today, that's what you're presenting to us, a 14-story building, because you have 13 of, you know, of residential and a rooftop pool area amenities, which definitely counts towards, towards the building height, and, and, and you're not counting that. And the way you describe it, you put parking level one, parking level number 1.5, and then you start on the, which I think is like the third floor, you start with residential one, and you take it to residential story 10.
Right.
I think that's a little bit deceiving, because when, when you look at this, it's not residential... I think that's a little bit deceiving because when, when you look at this, it's not residential 10. It's really a 13 plus the rooftop. And I think for maybe, Mr. Revolta and I, I think for my colleagues, I don't think that's the right way to, to illustrate.
It's, it's to the code. You understand that the height of the two garages, as long as they're underneath the height of one floor, you can, it doesn't count, they're, they're different designations between a residential floor and a parking level. And you can, and that was, that's, that's not me, that was reviewed.
And if it's less than one-third of the floor area is considered mezzanine.
Parking level.
Okay, that's, that's the, listen.
Anderson.
Okay. The, to me now, when I look at this project, again, I'm not opposed to a lot of the requests, but from the planning perspective, I really think that the, the placement of the loading dock on University there, it is, to put it nicely, really bad. Okay? That is probably one of the worst location and I'm, I don't know if, if, if I get Public Works to agree with me, but I think that that loading dock there is, is in the wrong place. In, I think it needs to be. I'm in favor of good development. I'm in favor of quality development, I believe, and somebody said that we need it. I think that I'm not opposed to, to granting more height than the 77. I think that 149 feet is, to me, is a little bit more than I would like to see in this location. With that, I'll conclude my comments.
Thank you.
One quick question again, I'm sorry. What is the precedent that the city has had when alleys are vacated? Owners and developers have paid the city for that land that they're vacating? I, I, because I, I think that if there's a precedent that there has been financial remuneration to the city, I, I think that precedent needs to be continued. If that precedent doesn't exist, I am not sure how much insistence anybody can make, or I can make, that now we start a new protocol. So I just wanted to have that history for my benefit and the benefit.
So the city does not own the alleys by FISL? And alleys are basically service corridor, they're subject to reversionary rights. So we cannot sell the alleys to a developer. If the alley gets closed and vacated, the voting property owners take the property back. That's what they were dedicated to from the, from the beginning.
And in some municipalities, developers can actually take to the middle of the alley to calculate their gross area. How is it done? And I apologize for my ignorance as an architect, that's an insult to injury, which has been used. What is the policy of the city?
I, I can speak to that.
The city does it, the city stuffs out the property.
Yeah.
This is, in the city, in City of Corrigan, it's to, within your boundary of your property.
So you cannot calculate the center of the alley in the city?
No, no.
Okay, that's what I needed.
Only when you vacate it and you granted a vacation, then it becomes part of your property, then that's a whole. But not, not if it's not needed.
Okay, and, and the city has not collected money in, in prior vacations?
In my experience, and, you know, for quite a few years in the Gables, not collecting money, but requires the developer to do something more.
As an exchange?
Yes.
As an incentive.
I know, and, and a million dollars is part of that.
But, but a million dollars here.
Is for the bonus, is for the Mediterranean bonus.
Yeah, the million dollars is, is really not truly a million dollars.
I'm not sure if the Mediterranean bonus requires any monetary contribution.
But they're using that improvement as open space. Right?
But that's part of Med bonus, that has nothing to do with a million dollars. The Med bonus allows them to count that.
I, I do not believe that the coast requires a you vacate an alley, that they obligated to provide any kind of a benefit to the city.
Look, again, you know, is, is this, in my opinion, a right opportunity to vacate an alley? Absolutely. It doesn't serve much, in my opinion, you know, from what I, and I'm very familiar with that side. It doesn't serve much. If, if there was a, an alley going east and west, then they would have to do something different. This alley, for the, for the truth of the matter, it doesn't, no purpose.
You cannot have a dead an alley, so you'll be right. They'll have to provide some alternative.
The vacation of alley, I am in favor of vacating this particular alley because it really only serves those two, those properties. But I have a, an issue when I'm getting benefit for something else that is not, you know, truly beneficial to the city.
For me, a lot of the questions and concerns were actually asked by my colleagues. But there are some that I still have. One of the concerns that I see is I understand that a traffic study under 50, you don't need to do and so forth. And I understand that's the way the code reads. It's just hard for me to understand that while such a project as the Plaza is going on across the way, we don't really understand yet the full impact that that's gonna have on the street. That, to me, is one concern. The second concern that I have is the, there's 80 units that you're getting out of this. You're going ahead and reducing the parking by 92. You're saying it's a great thing, we're reducing the parking by 92 spaces. In the past, I have never heard the city say, that's a great thing, you're reducing the parking. The city has always wanted more parking. You've got commercial that's on the ground floor. You're gonna have residents on the upper floors and you're gonna have visitors and you're gonna have other handicap requirements. You're gonna have electric vehicle requirements. There's a whole slew of things. To me, I see the reduction of the 92 spaces because it allows them to have more apartments and reduce their footprint at the bottom. And maybe I'm wrong. You know, I would, I would ask the architects that, but I'm just giving you.
More apartments, then you have more parking. It's always a, a cycle that almost you have to arrive at a balance by trial and error.
But I, but I think that the 92, I, I think that parking is always a good thing, to me.
Yeah.
That's just.
But people don't cause traffic. It's the vehicles that cause traffic.
Understood.
More parking, more vehicles.
But, but that's also, I mean.
Now, is the city set up for not having parking? No. Okay, I understand that. But it's just a point to keep in mind that, that's really the reality of it. Is the city set up to, to grow that way?
Right.
Is the public transportation set up to grow that way? Maybe not.
As far as the alley, my colleague, Robert, made a good point. I mean, there's 13,000 square feet of developmental right that's being gained. That should have a value to the city. And I understand that we're, we've taken a look and we said, okay, they're giving a million dollars to other areas, to the area in the center or so forth. But to me, that's being done because of the Mediterranean bonuses that they're getting. In my mind, I'm just not seeing the million dollars coming from that alley. But if you really look at it, I could look at it and say, well, you know, they're getting 13,000 square feet more, which means a higher tax base to the city. It means additional money's coming in. So there is a trade-off. And I, and I would have to look at that. A comment that I wanted to make is, there was a speaker that spoke and said, you know, there's new staff and that's why they're coming in.
Listen.
There is no new staff. I just want to make that clear to the public and on the record.
No.
There is an individual that is no longer with the department, but there is not new staff.
The, the recommendation is still prepared by the same exact person that prepares every recommendation that came up here previously.
Understood.
Which are our city planner and.
Understood.
Principal planners.
It's just the presentation is different from this, it's a different individual making the presentation.
My hope is that Jennifer, as a city planner, be in front of this board presenting more often. But this was very short notice and I'm not gonna throw her into the fire. So I'm up here just presenting what has already been hashed out.
Understood. The, and the last point that I'd like to make is, I look at this project not as you came back, you were here in 2020 or 2021 or, or so forth, and now you've reduced the height. I'm looking at this project as a new project to me. I'm not looking at it as, look what we have done. And as such, I do feel that you can still reduce your footprint further within the height to satisfy the area. That, to me, is, so that's a concern that I, that I have. The issue, I did have an issue that the front part was being used as FAR, but I see it as not, so I don't. I do agree with Robert as far as having the area where the car would come off as opposed to rounding it out. That's just from driving preference. And I see an issue that, that is created on Ponce further up by where the police station was. If you're coming down on Ponce, it's made in a, in a certain shape that when you're gonna turn in there, you don't have that turnoff. And that, I think that creates problems. That's really the comments that I have right now. One more thing, if I may. What are the, you're doing 80 units. There was a lot of concern between, you're gonna come in as condos and then you're gonna go to rentals. Can you talk, just for the record, a little bit about the size of the units?
Sure.
And the makeup of the units?
Absolutely. These units are gonna go up to 4,000 feet. And I'll use the same words that.
Can you give me a percentage of these 4,000, just from your head? I don't need exact.
The smallest ones start at 1,500.
16 units for, for bedrooms.
Is that accurate? Derek, Derek, please come to the, I'm just gonna call Derek Cardenas to the microphone a second.
Sure.
Take, take it easy on him, please.
Derek Cardenas, 851 Northeast, First Avenue.
Thank you.
I stood up in the beginning.
Thank you. So just give us, just a little bit of rundown. Doesn't have to be exact.
Sure, so condo, the unit mix is essentially, it's average unit size is 2,025 square feet.
Okay.
And the, the average unit range size is about 1,600 square feet all the way up to about 4,000 square feet.
Okay. To me, in my mind, those size units, I don't know if I see them so much as a rental unit, and that's just me. I see them more as, as condo space. I could be wrong, you know, but I'm just giving my, I'm just voicing what I see based on the size and the units that are there. Any other comments? Anybody like to make a motion?
One, one, one last moment. What, I noticed that.
Could you speak in the microphone because they're not.
The Christendom part is 149 feet, but the back part is down to 70 something. What percentage, more or less? For my benefit and everybody else's, of the, of the, of the parcel, it's at 149 feet because, I mean.
If I can get control of the presentation, I have a sheet that does that. This is a little tough.
Put into perspective that this whole project, the whole site is not 149 feet, that it's got a lower part towards the northwest, and I just was wondering what percentage or what area.
I have, I have control now again? Give me a second. There you go. That's 149 feet.
No, yes, I figured that out, but what more, what is the area of, what is the area of that, of that area?
That, so it's double loaded, it's 80 feet, 83 feet, and then I'd have to give you the, the length if I can just walk up to the.
150, 180 feet or something like that. And, and the site is whatever it is. So it looks to me like this is like 40%, I don't know, over 40, 50% of the site is at 149 and the rest is below that. So, I mean, I, as an architect, I have argued.
I wouldn't disagree with that.
It's okay. Developers ask me for all sorts of numbers and I never prepare for them, so I cannot throw a stone to the glass house. But I have tried to argue for projects of, of my projects that a lot of times height should be also contemplated as in terms of an average, right? That you can have a tall-skinned building when parts of your building are low. And this is something that I have encountered in many municipalities. So I would, just wanted to put in perspective that the whole site is not at 149, that there are parts of the site that are zero and parts of the site are 70 something. I was wondering about the percentage. If I'm following it, it could be 50, it could be 55, it could be 45, something like that. So that's just the point that I want.
Mr. Chairman, I, we have five requests.
Correct. And I would ask that E1 go towards the end.
E1 is.
The alley.
So which one should we take on first then?
Correct.
But, but the comp plan then is the one that's gonna give us the height that they're asking for, the height of the.
Correct.
I'm. Each one of these is brought as a unique item first because each of them has its own merits. I understand the content made. I would just request that each of them be decided on its own merits. We know exactly what the objection is to the project.
And they will be, they will be individually also.
Thank you.
I really think that I would, I don't have an objection taking the vacation of the alley first. Because to me, it's not vacating the alley the problem here. Okay? Because again, to me, the alley doesn't serve much. So to me, I have other issues or the problem with it, but it's not necessarily the alley. The, I, I don't know in which order.
Does everybody?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, please.
I was thinking, if, if I was gonna, eventually somebody's gotta make a motion. If I was to make a motion, I would put some conditions on the motion. I don't know if it's worth it, if it's proper, if it's legal to discuss what conditions, because you just brought a good point. I have a problem with the service entrance of, of University. As much as I have a problem with a little offshoot, I think the radius on Ponce and, and University Drive should be three times as what it is now. It's like 15 and 25.
Let me ask you a question, though. Is it within our realm to have that design moved for a recommendation? Is that not?
When it comes to the mixed-use project, is that, I believe that's a time that we could make that recommendation.
I just want to be clear.
I believe it's part of the site plan, isn't it?
The site plan, yeah. So.
Part of, okay.
At that point is when we make.
I'm in agreement with you that the, 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 the loading dock should be in the alley, in the backside. And, and the commission needs to entertain the idea of what kind of incentive there should be in exchange for vacating 13,000 square feet that are worth.
Is there, we're getting close to the time again. Is there a motion to extend it the meeting further?
I'll make a move, I made a motion to extend it, but.
To what time, please?
How, how late we're gonna plan to be here.
Can we just, can we just get another 20 minutes for now?
Yeah, okay, I'll make a motion to another, to 9:30.
Second.
To, no, we're at 9:15.
9:35.
9:35.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a sec, we have a second? Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody against? No. Continue, Robert.
No, I, I think, I was just saying that, that at the time of the site plan is we will make the condition of the loading dock on, on, but not at this time. So.
Okay.
I don't know how, how you all wanna take on.
If nobody else has any concern with the vacating of the public alley.
The, the only concern I have is, to be consistent, we've never really vacated an alley without a site plan that we can review and approve.
Correct. That was a concern that I have.
In this case, I don't have a problem deviating from that if you want to move, move the vacation of the alley.
Wouldn't, wouldn't we also, wouldn't we want to look maybe at the master plan first?
Okay.
We, we can do that, but at that point, it's, it's do or die, right?
I think in the past, that's, I think, I think in the past, that's what we have looked at first.
And if that's, if that's a precedent, I'm old for following the precedent, but then if we do that, then I'm gonna make a motion not.
Well, what?
As I said before, e- even if this project was meeting the height and everything else, like vacating that offshoot, vacating the alley, there are things that, and at least I'm speaking for myself, obviously. I, I would be in favor of making that because this, I think this, it would work out better for whoever comes if, if Mr. Morris doesn't decide to do that. And again, I hate to be, be careful what you wish for because the next guy might be an office building developer or a rental developer and we may not be.
But, but that's not totally, that's not true. That's not totally correct. Because whoever comes has to, you know, next developer has to come here to seek the same. approvals.
Exactly.
Okay? So I, I'm not sure that's a valid statement.
My, my point is that a developer could come now and meet the 77 feet high, whatever it is, and fill this thing with office and rentals, and I think the traffic will be worse. And this is my gut feeling, I could be wrong, you could be right. I'm just basically voicing my opinion and my gut.
I see.
I was just discussing with, with Hermes because if you vote on vacating the alley, and these are still separate parcels, and Mr. Morris sells one of them, we would not have been in favor of vacating the alley.
Correct.
So if there's vacating of the alley without a condition that is attached to the project, then it should be replanted.
You answered the question, okay? That's it. You answered the question.
And the vacation of the alley comes along with utility relocations.
Correct.
So it's, it goes together. One doesn't work without the other.
Let's look at the master plan.
You answered the question, thank you.
It, it seems to be if I suggest the height is the point of contention, and if we can get, if there is support for all the other items, then we know that that is the bottleneck to this project, even though we've gone to 80 units. Okay? And so can we fit 80 units in a different configuration if we had the other items? That's a question we'd have to go and solve. But if that's the point of contention, then hopefully something can happen here with this project.
Are you saying that you would come back to the sport?
It, it would be at the direction at, at that point in time under the commission.
Okay. On the master plan, is there a motion?
I can make a motion to approve.
You make a motion to approve the, the master plan, as is?
With, with conditions. If I, if this is the right time now.
Well, I, I don't think conditions are right on the comprehensive plan. The conditions can be to the site plan, can be to the, um...
But if we are voting on the site plan, and there are things with the site plan that we are not in agreement with, am I hearing correctly that it's not the proper time to put conditions?
I, I don't think it's, on a, on a comp plan item, they can proffer covenants, voluntary covenants, in connection with the comp plan. But I don't believe you can condition the comp plan. You can, there, you can condition the, and other applicants have proffered covenants in connection with the comp plan. And we've, um...
But what sort of covenant can they proffer that will assure us?
Well, for example, let's say they didn't want to go, right now it's to 100, the mid-rise intense, uh, high-rise intensity allows them to go to, I'm not sure...
150 and then 190.6 with the mid-rise.
Right. So if they wanted to go lower than what the, what the comp plan would permit, then they could proffer a covenant in connection with the comp plan. That would, it would be proffered by them. It's not, I, I'm not sure what conditions you have in mind. It would be related to what...
Can I throw them on the table and then we can pick it apart?
Well, I mean, yes.
Condition is covenant that this building will always be a condo and not a rental. That would be for me, one reacting to the policy.
I don't think you could do that.
You can't do that?
No.
We can, we can covenant use.
They can make, in, in...
I'm making suggestions.
Technically, you're not supposed to make a distinction between rental and owners.
Correct.
But if the applicant wants to voluntarily proffer a covenant, but it's going to be up to them, they haven't done that to...
Well, yeah, so I guess this is a suggestion.
That's why we're here.
Right.
That's why we're here.
Do not put a service entrance at all whatsoever on University Drive.
But that can be on the site plan, for sure.
So they, we're, we're only voting on the master plan and the comp plan now?
The comp plan. But the comp plan is more, we would not go past, and I, and I don't want to throw a number, but, you know, we would not go any higher than, just to put a number out there, 145 feet.
We were going to covenant, by the way, we were going to covenant to the 149 so that no one would feel like we were going to go and try to go to the max of 190.
Including architectural features or not?
Look, I, I'm going to put it out. I have a problem with 149. Okay? I don't know the rest of the board. I have a problem with that.
We're, we're in a, in a world of design, and so I would look to you and say, if that's a point of contention, where is the solution? Because no one would know better than the, than, than the two esteemed architects.
What is your floor-to-floor height, clear height for the condos?
What is Derek's?
Top of the slab to the bottom of the slab.
Sarami, you have a question?
Yeah, I got it. I was just checking, the zoning code doesn't differentiate between rental and condo, but the building code does. I mean, that's the only thing that...
So you have clear 12 feet?
Correct.
They were to change in the future.
Would you consider 10 feet?
It would have to come back through the building code.
But, but...
But how many floors? It begins to cut the height, guy.
No, no. Because your retail on the ground floor is probably 18, 20 feet. And then you got a parking, and you, when you start adding, you as an architect, which I, I've always looked up to you, you know?
You're downing me?
You got to look at how many floors you're doing.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that height is sensitive to you and to a lot of people. 149 is not too big, because I believe, once a building goes beyond 50, 60, 80 feet, the, 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 how many times have we listened to Anna Hala-Bird and Elizabeth saying, once you go past 50 feet urbanistically, what does it really matter? So I am not obviously as concerned, the difference between 77 and 149 is the first part. But given the fact that they're sensitive to many people, if they can cut two feet or something of the floor-to-floor height because they can market luxury units, I have had the misfortune of doing condos for 40 years and getting sued constantly, 10 feet it's okay for luxury condominium. I don't know if you agree with that or not. 12 is great, but 10 would be marketable.
If my math is correct, if my math...
And I think the retail, if the retail, you're correct, is, is higher than what it should be, then cut the retail. By the time that you start adding up feet...
120.
You might be down to a, to a, to a height that may calm the concerns of a lot of people, but still make the profit, the project, uh, doable. And, and I think these are the kind of compromises that I have to go through many times on projects that we have. So I was just offering that. And again, to me, the radios on Ponce and University, the, the service drive, the height, as you said, the incentive of saying 13,000 square feet with your vacation in the alley, to me all are those conditions that should be put on the table to try if, 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 if the pie gets sweeter. That's, and again, I've...
Do you want to make a motion, Louis?
For the comp plan?
For the master plan.
I believe that I wanted to put some conditions that I cannot. So the only condition would be a suggestion of, of making sure that this building stays the way it's being presented to us. If not, it has to come back to us. So the switching bait that happened at the plaza doesn't happen in this project.
We can, we can covenant to height. There's no, I mean...
And, and height, if, if we can...
If there's an issue with height, if there's a number, if there's a magic number that makes architecturally, Mr. Luis Rueda and Robert Behar, whom I'm deferring to because you are the experts in regards to the architecture, that makes you feel comfortable in this area with that footprint, then we will endeavor to reach that. But without direction in regards to that one point that is holding us up right now, we're, we're lost. And so...
How many floors are 12 feet clear you have?
Let me, let me ask, Mr. Deury?
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you a question. Would your client, I'm just going to throw a number out. Would your, would your client agree to 125 feet total?
If, if you gave us 125 feet, we would figure out a way to make it work. Remember, we're only doing 80 units, so we have, we have a lot to play with to make it work.
Because as of right...
It's only 80 units.
It could be 77, and if it would be 125 feet with Mediterranean bonuses to the top and everything.
Yeah, we, we would covenant to 125. Remember, the 80 units is so, so few units, it doesn't even trigger a traffic study. So yes, of course we would go to the 125 if that's what it takes to get this project done, because we were responding to do the highest quality project you can, and I understand that we don't want to compare it to the other one, but that was the direction we were given, and they wanted condos. And so when we do that, obviously you guys understand, the more height in the ceiling, the better.
You can cut off the building right off the bat about 15, 16 feet right now by taking two feet out of the residential and, and, and four feet or so out of the retail. I mean, that, right there, right off the bat is 14 and four, almost 20 feet.
Look, the, the reality, unfortunately, and, and, and this is something that we are not going to be able to, to do anything about. The property to the, to the south is 190. We would not, if, when a project comes there, we're not going to be able to do anything about that. That is the reality. Okay?
I would be cut dead if I voted in favor of a project on Lot 34 at 190 feet.
Well...
Let the record show that.
I understand, but that's what they have the right to do, and it's going to be very difficult. That's for another day.
I hope so.
Okay? That's for another day. I, can, can, can your client make this work? And, and you were a little bit more than I wanted to see. You know, can it work in the 125 feet that the chairman, you know, mentioned?
Or die trying, yes.
So...
And we can covenant to that, there's nothing wrong with it.
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Behar. You said he came in at a little bit more than you wanted to see, so why don't we say a little less if you're saying that's a little bit more than you wanted to see?
Because you already...
I just gave a number.
It's a number that, you know, I don't think is solid.
Do you guys have a number? I, I'm, I, I want to hear from Chip, and I want to hear from your client.
This project will work at 130, at 130 feet.
I think if the number, we're starting from a 77, and we said 149, and that was a lot, 125, I'm not really comfortable. I don't think that that's, that's still a lot. It's a big difference.
What number were you...
Let me ask, let me ask you a question. Do you see, do you see that building part of the...
Mr. Deury, could I ask you to just move that so the people in the back?
I just wanted to, because of the discussion earlier.
Do you see that development?
Thank you, sir.
Do you see that development contiguous or whatever with any of the residential neighborhood behind Christie's, or do you just discount them? And I'm not, you know, I'm not saying you discount the people, I'm just saying you discount the geographic situation. Because, you know, if you read this...
It's your question to the West?
Well, no, no, I'm talking about the residential neighborhood. This is a trend, obviously this was in our code as a transition area.
Right.
No doubt. I don't know how tall the Zubi building is.
84 feet.
84 feet, okay. This is going to be taller than the Zubi building, so it's certainly not a transition.
It's 84 feet.
Okay? It's certainly not a transition. And so my point is, you know, and, and the thing that's still sticking in my craw is like, here it goes. The proposed conditional use does not conflict with the needs and character of the neighborhood and the city. So what is the neighborhood? And, and staff says yes, it, it does, you know, it doesn't conflict with them. It says the proposed conditional use will not adversely or easily affect the use of other property in the area, the neighbors. Oh, no, it doesn't conflict with that. I mean, come on.
So Chip, is there a motion?
Well, no, listen, and again, I, I'm a code guy.
I understand.
You know? And, and if we deviate from the code and we want to do it because we think that it doesn't affect the neighbors, then vote, you know, vote for it. That's just how I feel. And, and, you know, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not throwing any stones here, I'm just telling you that I...
No, but in terms of conditions, do you have a different condition than the ones? I was proposing 135, 130, uh, on, on, uh, the chairman is proposing 125, Robert's at home a little bit less. Do you, do you have a...
Look, I've just seen, I've just seen what's happened in this city.
I threw a number out. I didn't propose 125.
And actually, I think that you were very close to...
I, I've just seen, I've just seen what development has done in this city in the past five to 10 years that abut residential neighborhoods. I have no problem with Codina's project, you know, I voted for the extra height for Codina for low, for lower density. I had absolutely no problem with that at all.
And the 206 and a half.
Yeah, you did a half, we get the half of it. It's not about, they needed, okay. But, but when we, when we start to, when we start to abut residential neighborhoods, I, I just, we just need to, we're the gatekeeper on that stuff, and I just, I'm sorry, I mean...
No, 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 I mean, that's a valid point.
You can propose 135 and a...
To me, University Drive is the, is the margin of mine. You cannot cross University Drive, and that's why for the second or third meeting in a row now of, about this and some other issues, I'm pleading with the city to look at Lot 34. You've got to change that. Because that is the, we can do, we can... Lot 34 is the biggest enemy for everybody here.
Bur Harris Act.
Let's...
And he will represent a, you know, as an attorney, that's a Bur Harris...
Gentlemen, let's focus on the property we have before us.
All right. Can I just cut? Don't, don't, really, don't appease me. I mean, I, I, I mean, vote, vote what you feel, obviously, and propose what you feel is, is right. I just have my principles on that, and, and that's how I am, you know?
Just because you're the senior member, we just...
No, no, that's, but I've seen it, look, I, I've seen it with what the Plaza did to the, to the residences on Coconut Grove Drive there and whatever, I've seen it, what it's doing at other areas, I, I just, you know, it's just...
Horrible, horrible. I think there's no question about it.
All right, let's move, let's move forward on this.
Actually, move with a couple of conditions that I, it was height...
On the master, so you're doing the master plan?
On the comp plan, right?
Okay.
And there was two conditions, I forget now the other one. It was height and, and the, uh, condo versus retail.
Condo and a...
Condo versus rental. Those were my, my, I, I moved to approve with those two...
You moved to approve, what, I'm sorry.
Conditions.
What height or...
Height, for me, would be 130.
So your motion is 130.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I just want to explain the context of worries. If this item were before the city commission and they wanted to go with a lower height than what the comp plan provides, they would have had to have a finalized covenant with an opinion of title, reducing the height to whatever the height is. At best, in this posture, since we're making a recommendation, if you approve, um, the item for the comp plan, then the best that you can do is recommending the acceptance of a proffered covenant by the, um...
Applicant.
Applicant.
Correct.
Reducing the height to X. So that's what your recommendation is going to be on, on the comp plan if you choose to approve it. Or you can recommend, recommend denial.
Yes.
He made a motion, is there a second, right?
So your motion is to go from one forty-nine to one thirty-five, which is fourteen less, right?
One thirty.
One thirty.
He said one thirty, but, and, and the, and the other covenant that he stopped the law.
And he get, is there a?
Is there a second? So that motion dies. It is nine thirty. I, I would like to propose we just extend it to ten o'clock, because I don't see a stopping. And Chip was right.
No.
Is, Chip, would you like to make a motion?
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I'll move it to ten o'clock.
We have a motion to ten o'clock.
Wait, before?
Ten oh-one.
Before I make, before I vote on that, what about if we're not finished by ten o'clock? We're gonna stop? I'm not gonna stay past that time.
That's a decision we take at that time, if we.
I wanna put it there because.
Okay, we have a motion at ten o'clock, is there? The court reporter, he's.
Court reporters on overtime anyway, so who said amend that?
Hasn't been my fault. It hasn't been my fault, right? Not me.
Mr. Deary, you're, you're fine. So. Guys, guys, we have a motion at ten o'clock, is there a second?
Second.
Claudia, a second? Everybody say aye, that's in favor, aye? Anybody against? Okay. So that motion failed. Anybody wanna make a second motion? Mr. Behar? I see you're chomping at the lips.
No, I, I, look, I, I'm, I'll make a motion with a maximum height, and it may not go for about a hundred and ten feet.
We have a motion of a hundred and ten feet? And would that be?
Is the, is the, we need to know from the applicant, because what you're gonna, your recommendation at this point can't be a condition of it. It is a recommendation that you accept a proffered covenant from council. If council is not prepared to do a hundred and ten feet, then you have to understand that you can't condition.
They, they can, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
They can, they, they can condition the approval on a proffer from us. I don't have to.
If you're indicating tonight that you're gonna do a voluntary proffered covenant of a hundred and ten feet, I'm not gonna ask you to produce the covenant now with an opinion of title. You'll have to do that at commission, but at least this board will recommend that they're gonna prove it with the acceptance of a proffered covenant from the applicant of X feet.
Because if not a proffered covenant, then.
It's gotta be a voluntary proffered covenant.
Then we're gonna go ahead and just take motions the way it is here.
That was my question, Mr. Chair, can't we just vote on the item the way that it was presented? Again, I think the last time we came across this issue was.
If somebody wants to make a motion, but right now we have Robert at a hundred and ten feet, and the applicant? Are you okay with that?
I mean, it would, it would have to be conditioned on a proffer, but I can't offer the proffer right now, because it's just significant difference.
Then the motion dies.
But as, but as an attorney representing the applicant, you can.
Technical discussion, attorney.
You can indicate, you can indicate to the board that you will proffer a covenant at commission at a hundred and ten feet.
Right.
Okay, so that, that dies.
I'd like to make a motion to vote on the item as presented.
You'd like to make a motion to vote on the item as presented?
Yes.
On, for the master plan?
Yes.
Is that a motion? Well, is that a motion for approval?
We have one motion for, is that a motion for approval as presented?
Uh, no.
So it's, what is your motion? I'm sorry.
A motion to take up the, just to take it up as, as presented, yeah.
Well, you don't, you don't need a motion to that, you just need to make a motion.
So you wanna make a motion to approve it as?
No, I'm sorry, no, that's not my, that's not my intention.
Are you making a motion to deny the application?
So you're, you're making a motion to deny the application as presented? Okay.
We're, we're working with E two.
That's correct.
The master, yes.
Right, we're just doing it, we're just doing the master plan.
We have a motion to deny as presented? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Any discussion? No, call the roll, please.
Claudia Miro?
Yes.
Luis Revuelto?
No.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
Robert Behar?
No.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes.
Three-two, I'm sorry, four-two.
Now, we don't have, that, you have an opportunity if you want to try to reach a four vote minimum, or we just go with a three, three-two denial, which is, would not, will not constitute a recommendation, because it has to be minimum four.
So it goes to commission without a recommendation?
Correct. Okay, thank you.
So, then, then we would move on to?
No, we can, because then if, if.
How do you move, I think, Robert, how do you move on to the next item if you have a no recommendation on the, on that item, on the master?
What's the next item?
You still have to take up the others.
All right.
Because you're making a recommendation to.
Then you make, I make a motion.
Make it, you can have it the same vote for, for all of them if you want to, but we have to.
What is the next item, just for the record?
The four.
What is the nature of?
The next item is, number three is the, the TDRs.
The TDR transfer of the TDR to receiving site vacating the alley, the, the site plan?
Yeah.
And which is the last one?
The E four is a, that's the site plan conditional use review, and E five is the replat.
I would take a vote right, right now on each one of them, you know?
Well, we already have, anybody wanna make a motion on item E three?
That's which one, the, the TDRs?
The TDRs.
The TDRs that were approved by historic.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve the TDRs?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion?
Yes. Why would I approve transfer TDRs when I don't have a comp plan that will require?
We can, we would obviously have, I mean, I'll play hypothetical devil's advocate, we can fit the square footage at a lower height.
But then you don't need TDRs, because your, your height is gonna tell you how much TDRs you're gonna do.
He's right.
We can, we can. You, 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 you change the balloon a little bit, but you can do it.
The city staff has.
The commission could still approve the project.
Correct.
Because you're a recommending board, right? Commission could still approve the project.
Correct.
And the TDRs, just to point out one fact, that was the item that was approved by historic.
Understood.
At any rate, we're sending a, we're sending a clear message to the commission, right? So, that's my point of view.
So, you have a motion to?
Approve and he's.
The TDRs, we have a second. Robert, under discussion, said how we do it. Mr. Caller, we can do it?
You can make a recommendation on each item.
Okay.
It may not be possible to do the TDRs if they don't get the height, I don't know that.
Understood, so we have a motion? We have a second, any other discussion?
Put a condition? I, I can't put a condition, I think you said you could.
But he also said we don't know that, right? You said you don't know that we can.
On the, on the TDRs?
Yes, correct.
I'm not sure where the TDRs are really not.
So, we have a motion.
To the TDRs.
Put a maximum if you want to.
No.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Legos.
Any other discussion?
I mean, look, we proved that they can do it, if they wanna do it, they don't have to do it, but we were proving that they, they can do it if they want.
And they could always do less.
In all fairness to applicant, we need to let them know how we feel about things.
We have a motion, a second, call the roll, please.
Luis Revuelto?
Yes.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
Robert Behar?
Yes.
Claudia Miro?
No.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes.
Now, I'll, I'll move a motion on the alley vacation.
All right, we're going back to E one now?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that, before it replatted, I think we have to do that.
Do we? I think the city has a concern.
Yeah, we. That if it's sold, so that was gonna be my next question, can I put a condition on alley vacation?
It's only a recommendation.
I'm sorry?
It's only a recommendation.
Right, but what, right, but what is?
The recommendation was that it only, it only would be applicable if the property is developed and not, and not split.
Yeah, I think that's fair. Is that your main concern?
I, I, I would ask staff, I defer to public working staff, if that would be acceptable to them.
To them.
Yeah, tell us what your concerns are about the.
The alley vacation if.
This property doesn't get built.
Right.
What was the question? I'm sorry, we were discussing actually.
So, on the alley vacation, you expressed a concern, I believe, earlier that if the project was never developed, that now the owner has an alley, and if they split it, the city has now lost an alley.
We, my understanding from public works is that we would not be recommending approval if it wasn't because the, the developer owns both sides, and the alley is really, renders useless at that point. But if he turns around tomorrow and sells.
Half, one of the sides, right.
Half of it, because he didn't get the project approved, then we would not have.
The same ownership on either side.
Both sides, right, the same ownership on both sides would be a condition.
I just don't see how that.
I mean, look, I, I really like to see something developed on that piece of property. I really would, because it needs to be, we've all agreed to that. And I think that we can, you know, we need to help as much as we possibly can to do that. And that's the whole purpose of my trying to give, give an impetus to, to, to the applicant as to what, how I feel about things, so.
But, you know, a concern that I have is how are we doing this without a site plan to look at and vote on it?
Okay, I mean, I, I appreciate that.
I appreciate it as well.
I accept that, I mean, maybe I agree with it, you know, I'm deviating from how I normally would, but, but I understand.
But I, I think so far, whatever we're doing here, if any other developer comes in and owns both sides of the property, I don't think we're harming the city or the community by voting that with a condition, that you can vacate the alley as long as both sides of the alley are under the same ownership.
Especially that alley now is, is a parking lot in my mind.
Exactly, it's just nothing.
It's not east-west, it's north-south, and it's.
Let's put the, you're right, let's put the condition that in order for that alley to fully be.
Vacated.
Vacated and used, the same ownership has to be on both sides. Is that something that the city staff will be acceptable?
You said it better than I did.
You're getting a workout, aren't you, buddy?
I need it. So, I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
If we put a condition that that alley will be vacated with a condition that both side of the alley has to be under the same ownership. If not, it reverse back to the alley.
Exactly. So me, it's a simple.
Say it again, say it again?
Well, I don't know if I can.
So, the, the, the vacation of the alley will be tied to a replat?
How difficult is that?
And that pretty much takes care of the situation, because you no longer have different parcels.
I'm sorry, say that again, because I, I didn't, I don't follow.
On the replat, I wanted to do.
So if the, the vacation of the alley, it's subject to the replat.
Right.
Once you replat, you have a single parcel, and you no longer have different parcels you can subdivide and sell. So the alley.
To react to your concern, what happens if, if, and we're saying, okay, we're willing to accept the vacation of the alley as long as both sides are under the same ownership and there's a unity of title?
Essentially, there'd be a unity of title between two parcels.
There'll be one property.
There you go.
And condition.
That's why he's a lawyer.
Condition the, the vacation upon a unity of title between both parcels, and if you approve the replat, they're gonna have that parcel. So you have two different ways to tie him in.
Okay.
There was too many people talking at the same time.
Friendly amendment.
I'm sorry, I, I just, there's so many people talking at the same time and interrupting, I just wanted to hear from one person just what it is that we're discussing.
Okay, so you're approving the vacation of the alley subject to a unity of title between the two parcels?
Exactly. So they could never sell half, and that, it will be, now becomes one parcel, which is okay.
Okay, but what happens to the site plan issue? Is it possible that we not vote on this until we have a site plan? I mean, what about that issue? Because I, I mean, I think we're addressing one concern, right? With the vacating of a plat, if one part sells, et cetera, but what about?
Well, Claudia, but, but we're not approved, just because we're vacating the alley, we're not approving any project. What we're doing is, we're gonna make that one contiguous site.
So what happens in the future? What is, how, does that make us vulnerable in the future? That's my question.
They're gonna be entitled to the thirteen thousand square feet. That's it. That's gonna be, and, and Mr. Caller, that would be the only implication that they will get benefit by us vacating the alley.
You have an approved site plan that's gonna include both parcels.
With a unity of title.
Correct. You, you're not approving any site plan.
I understand.
What, what you giving them by vacating the alley enough land area? If, if the TDRs are used, because it may not be subject to TDR transfer. If it's not them, then somebody else may not have those super TDRs.
Here's my other question, how are we negatively impacting anyone if we don't approve vacating the alley? If we don't move forward with that, how does that, you know, negatively affect anyone, a future applicant, the current applicant? I mean, where we are right now?
Current developer or future developer? That's it, that's the answer.
We have to look at what's here now before us. That's what's important.
Yeah, and, and in all honesty, in, in other cities, and I don't know Craig could speak to this more than I can, but in other cities that I've worked in, you would actually replat, and you would unify the lot, and this would become one lot. Now, the developer may not wanna do that yet, because he may not wanna unify the lot if he can't get this development, because it may not be worth it for him, and he wants to sell the other piece, so.
If that's the case, it continues to be an alley.
Do you wanna make?
Correct.
Continues to be an alley.
We either build it all together.
I don't think we're doing any harm whatsoever. Then we gotta ask the developer if he's.
There's, if, if you're saying it has to be a unity title, and you don't want it split up, then, yes. Obviously, we're not gonna split this thing up, it's either gonna go all, all, all together, or it's not. And that's it.
Even most developers will be the case, so that's.
And it's to correct, is to correct it, and this, and item five go together anyways.
But he's saying, if understood correctly, you say that unless, you, you don't wanna unify the, the parcel, you wanna keep them separate.
No, we can unify them, we don't care.
They're, they're agreeing to it.
If that's a condition, we'll do it. I'm here to, to.
I, I'll make a motion to approve the vacation of the alley with a condition subject to the replating, right?
Well, we're gonna do that in another item.
It's, you're gonna do it in a second.
To a unity of title.
You should probably just go on both of them together.
Subject to unity of title, covenant.
Why not do a, is it not better for plat?
Well, it, we're, we're kind of with belts and suspenders. With a plat, they're gonna connect it, and we're gonna also require a unity of title for the vacation.
So you're doing both?
We're gonna do both.
And that's your?
That's my.
Recommendation?
Recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion?
Chip, you have the. Yeah, just, I wanna ask staff a question. Who, who's the, who was the planner? The, who's the planner?
Chrissy.
Jennifer.
Yeah, so, so from a city's perspective, is that parcel better for development from the city's perspective as two separate lots, or as one big lot? From a planning perspective?
As far as a building construction, you mean, well, to park it.
Your vision on the planning side.
You would want to have a larger lot, people to park your.
So it's better for the city to, to bring it together for future development?
But if this project is not done, they'd have to come back.
I wanna hear what you're saying, but what is it?
Because you have to fit the parking as required in the code, but not everybody's in favor of larger amassing a lot of pieces of land to put a very long building, right? But because of the parking, I mean, I just wanna make sure that she's not putting a spot where she's saying as a planner, she's cruel this type. Because of the parking, it allows for, for a developer to put in the parking, otherwise, Mr. Morris can't build a project at all.
I understand, but in that area, you know, that whole areas, I guess, Almeria Mount, whatever those smaller office buildings are, you know, there's starting to be somewhat of a consolidation. We actually changed it to where it was a ten thousand square foot lot they could do instead of a. So I just wanna know from a city's perspective, would they rather see two lots and one lot?
I, I think if we unified the lots, and it's not Mr. Morris, somebody else comes later. We could, we could ask for, for public benefit just the same way, because we're gonna be approving a project.
Right.
Robert, you made a motion before there's a discussion, we have a second, okay, any other discuss?
I just wanted to say, but if we unify, right, the, the two lots, then that means forever and ever, it's always gonna be a big project that comes there.
I, I think that's really a, like, a, a question for the owner, if he wants to do that.
But, but I'm just saying, if, if he wants to do that, and we end up voting that we're unifying the lot, then it's always gonna be a big building there. If you have it separate, then it may be a possibility to have two smaller buildings, right? Or two smaller structures.
Or, or you're gonna keep what you have there, because it's not a, a really true buildable lot, and you're gonna have that iPhone there forever. That's the reality. I don't care, we may not wanna have a tall building for what's there today, it is shameful to have.
I, I just gotta say that, from what I've learned from the planning, from the city planner, is that the parking and the not, the site not being developable is more an issue of its height also, because they can't get the parking in. Just to throw that in there.
We made a, I made a motion, we have a second.
We have a second, and that motion is with both the plat and.
Unity of title.
Unity of title. And with both.
You're combining E one and E five together?
Might as well.
No, we're only doing.
This is unity of title. Right?
This is only vacating, we're not, we're not combining them, correct?
We're not, we're doing the replating just yet.
We're only doing E one.
All we're doing is conditioning the approval of the vacation of the alley to a unity of title.
All we're doing is conditioning the approval of the vacation of the alley to a unity of title. That's the motion.
That's it. That's it. Can we call the roll?
With the conditions that you mentioned.
With the condition.
Call the roll, please.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
Robert Behar?
Yes.
Claudia Miron?
No.
Luis Revuelto?
Yes.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes.
Then. Number five?
E five replating. Replotting with a condition, which, which is the condition now?
That's it.
I think the replating is pretty much a no brainer right now.
The next one, the next one is the, uh, conditional use for the mixed use project. That's E four.
It seemed logical to just do E five if.
I mean, if you want to do E five first, which is the replat, we can do the replat first.
We practically voted for that just now, so it might as well. Yeah, make a motion to approve E five.
With the same condition?
With the same condition.
Well, on E five, actually, by the replat, it is.
Going to unify the title.
Replotting to one parcel.
You're making the motion? Made a motion with that condition. Chip? Second. Chip actually came up with this motion.
Louis, second?
He's been left out in the cold.
Any discussion?
The limelight.
Call the roll, please.
Get it for one, one property.
Robert Behar?
Yes.
Claudia Miron?
No.
Luis Revuelto?
Yes.
Chip Withers?
Yes.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes. And the last one for this is four. Mixed use site plan and condition.
We can, we, we can make that approval, you know.
So do you want to make a?
Claudia, you want to make a motion?
To deny or approve or?
We could, I think we could only make a motion to deny. Or make a motion to deny. Is, is the, is the item whether we would allow or we would recommend to the commission that this could be a mixed use, uh, property or project or, or land in the.
It's to, it's to re-categorize it as MXD. Ultimately, whatever we develop is restricted by what was decided today, but it just says MXD.
But, but if.
But it doesn't specifically approve any.
No, but I would like to see a project for me to approve.
Correct.
There, so without a project, I, I cannot support.
Your motion is to deny?
To deny because.
I'll second the motion.
A second?
I'm behind, denying it, I'm sorry.
Because if there's no project, what am I approving? I, I could, we could, and historically, we have approved only with a project.
Correct. Any other discussion?
What is the definition of MXD real quick?
I'm sorry, there was a lot of discussion.
Definition of MXD is what?
The MXD is a mixed use district regulation from the 2007 zoning code. Remember, we're going forward under the old code.
Is it tied to a height?
It is not tied specifically to a height. And staff can confirm that the only reason we need MXD is because we're going under the old zoning code. The new zoning code dealt with that. It just said your MX one, your MX two, your MX three, we're still commercial.
Were to vote in favor of changing to MXD, we are not approving or recommending a certain height.
Correct.
Right, that's what I wanted. There's a motion, a second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? No, call the roll, please.
Claudia Miron?
Yes.
Luis Revuelto?
No. We're voting on a denial.
To deny.
Correct.
Motion to deny.
She voted in favor of the denial, I voted against the denial.
Continue with the roll, please.
Chip Withers?
No.
Robert Behar?
Yes.
AB Eisenstadt?
Yes.
Three, two.
And for the record, if I had a project, I will vote in favor of it. Thank you very much.
Agreed.
Okay.
I think that's, uh.
Hopefully you have a clear picture of.
You've got some work to do in the kitchen.
Like, as, as I said, this is a difficult task. It is between the law and the wants, and I appreciate the service. Thank you.
As an architect, I've always welcomed and begged for boards to give me a clear, concise direction so I don't have to continue to see a psychiatrist.
And Mr. Behar and I will have a philosophical debate. You and I, you and I should get coffee and have a philosophical debate about all the nuance later.
Mr. Chairman, we have one more item.
Can I get invited to a coffee?
I have a recommendation for you on that item.
Yes, please.
As far as, since we're literally.
I'm going to make a motion to put it for the next meeting.
I want, we have to, we have a special meeting scheduled for, what's the date?
The 21st.
Which has only one item on it.
So we, we, then if we're going to do this, we need to announce now that we need a motion to defer this to the 21st at, uh, 6:00 PM.
Time specific.
I'd like to ask staff, tell me about this item.
Could we hear the item first and then they could decide if they want to?
But we only have five minutes. TDRs. Are you going to extend the time?
It's, it's actually.
Can you do it in two minutes? Can you do it in two minutes?
Yes.
I don't know.
What?
I don't want to rush it.
If you want, if you want to go to it.
I'll just tell you what it is and then you all could decide, could we do that?
We need to clear the room. If everybody's leaving, silence, please, we still have the meeting.
You know.
It's, it's not the TDRs of the museum.
It might help if we had a copy.
It is not.
Oh, it's not?
No, no. It, it's actually restoring the zoning that the, that parcel had prior to the 2021 zoning code cleanup. We just want to restore it to what it was before. We lost development rights in Arizona, which was inadvertently done, it should not have been done. That's really all it is. It's restoring it to what it was pre 2021.
And I'm in favor of that, but I have some questions, that's the whole thing.
Okay, so then you guys, that's.
So does that affect the, the fuel gallery? Are there development rights above the fuel gallery, the new building? Or is it only development rights above the old monument?
The development rights are on the historical building.
But not on the fuel gallery?
I don't know if that's.
Can we?
That's the kind of questions I have.
Guys, look, can we read it into the record?
Before you do that, other than that, restoring the, the previous zoning, we're not doing anything else to it, correct? We're not.
Right.
I'll make a motion to, to approve.
No, 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 hold, 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 we got to read it into the record.
Yes.
No, no, but if we're going to go forward with it, let me read into the record.
Guys, what lot, because you have, you, in the, in the, in the thing, you have the lot of the new fuel building.
Wait, well, let's not start with the discussion.
Okay.
Let, let me read it in.
Wait, do this next meeting now.
Item E six, in ordinance of the city commissioner, Carl Gables, Florida, making zoning district boundary changes. Please, please.
Maya, please.
District boundary changes pursuant to zoning code article 14 process, section 14 dash 212 zoning code text and map amendments for the property located lots one through four, block 34 of Carl Gables, section K 285, Aragon Avenue, Carl Gables, Florida, from special use S district to mixed use one MX one district and lots 42 through 48, including 20-foot alley laying between block 34 of Carl Gables, section K, Carl Gables, Florida, from special use S district to mixed use two MX two district, providing for repealer provision, servability clause and providing for an effective date. Item E six, public hearing. Can we ask if there are anyone here to speak on the item, Mr. Chairman, just for the record?
Jill, do we have anybody even on Zoom?
No.
There is nobody here, uh.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this? Let the record reflect, no one as indicated. Mr. Chairman, it's, you got the.
Do you want to?
Need the presentation so I could show the.
And.
Can you just tell us basically what it is that you, the overall, what you want to do?
This is a site. The site used to be prior to, there's the, uh, location map. It used to be before the 2021 code change, it was commercial. And in the code cleanup, it changed to special use. And we're just trying to go back to what it used to be, which, the equivalent of it today, which is what, the MX one? MX one and MX two.
Thank you.
That, we had all the, the neighborhood meeting, it's in front of you today, it'll go to commission for first reading and then it'll come back to you. All the public notification went out. We did the 1,000-foot radius and the staff recommends that, yeah, that we basically go back to what it was before.
Thank you.
Is there? Mr. City Attorney, I serve on the board of the museum, is that a conflict?[1562.98]